And welcome to our Cumberland County Board of Commissioners meeting for October the 17th, 2022. Thank you all for being here. We are glad every time we have a full house so they can hear the people's business. We will get started. We're going to actually have the invocation and let's see which one of my commissioners would like to do the invitation, invitation because Commissioner Booth is going to be out. It'd be Commissioner Lancaster, but if you give me a minute, Commissioner Lancaster, just as a point of privilege, I guess because I'm the chair up here, is that I would like to have us take a moment of silence for Ms. Olga Thorpe, better known as Bo Thorpe, who if anybody knows the theater here, Cape Fear Regional Theater, she dedicated her life to that theater. And if you look at Broadway, the number of people who started here and have gone on to Broadway is just phenomenal for a community this size. But not only that, the talent that she brought into this community to be able to have us witness those outstanding plays and performances and theatrics that were out at Cape Fear Regional Theater, I thought it would be, we would be remiss not to at least take a moment. There are people who come through our community that just change our community. And I was reading part of her, some of the statements that they made, which is when she got here and they moved here to Fayetteville and she wanted to have that cultural outlet and it wasn't here, that she started and built it from being at a church to what it is today. And for many of us, if we really want to live out the legacy of Bo Thorpe, they are, they have a fundraiser going on to be able to even change what Cape Fear Regional Theater looks like. So I would encourage any and everybody to donate to that. If you have not gone there to see a play, you're missing out here in Cumberland County. It is just awesome in terms of the performance and the people. And it's our citizens, our friends, our neighbors that are performing there. And it is just tremendous. So if we could just take a moment of silence just for, and I'm gonna call her Bo Thorpe, not because it's disrespectful, but that's how we, oh, and I almost forgot, even up in her neighborhood on Christmas, she, she got all of her neighbors together to come together to raise money to be able to give to this community. And I'm not talking about $2,000 or $5,000, we're talking $25,000, $30,000, $40,000. And it takes a person that's respected to be able to do that. And so I just think it's fitting that we just give a moment of silence for Bo Thorpe. Thank you. Commissioner Lancaster.
Please stand. Father, we thank you for this wonderful and beautiful day. Please bless those who are assembled, Lord, as we discuss the concerns of our residents. May our decisions always be in their best interest. We ask these things in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I do not see our youth council. Oh, you know what? School was out today. So that's might be why they're not here with us. Usually we have our Cumberland County Youth Council members and they'll be at our next meeting. So we will have them here. This will take us to our public comment period. And Madam Manager, if you will read our public comment.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. As you know, the public comment period is an opportunity at each evening meeting for the public to share their concerns and thoughts with the Board of Commissioners. Our public comment period will last no longer than 15 minutes. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes to make remarks until the 15-minute time limit is attained. No time may be yielded to a speaker by another speaker. We ask that all speakers come to the lectern and begin their remarks by stating their name and providing their address. The public comment period is not intended for the Commissioners to respond or address questions in this venue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Manager. And we actually have six speakers. So for my fellow Commissioners, instead of dividing this 15 up by six people, we're just going to give everybody three minutes and just takes it to 18 minutes instead of 15 minutes. And I think that's the fairest way to do it. Any objection to that?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
We do have six speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Ms. Patricia Slappy.
Come right on up, Ms. Slappy. How are you doing this evening? Good. Yes, ma'am. Right there and pull that microphone down right to you. And if you just give us your name and address and what you wish to say, tell us.
My name is Patricia Slappy. My address is 2555 Bel Air Street in Fayetteville, North Carolina. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Councilman, for letting us speak tonight. On behalf of the Bel Air Community Watch and the citizens of Cumberland County, we want to thank you for allowing us to voice our opinion and our concerns to you tonight. This matter is about the nuisance of the ends on 301 South. Every business located on 301 has been repeatedly vandalized. For example, Todd's Furniture Company has had $10,000 worth of furniture stolen. Wade Harden Plumbing has had catalytic converters stolen, their trucks broken into. And when the employees came to work the next morning, they found the criminal lying beside the truck, not able to get back up and get out and climb the fence to get back over after committing the crime. Wade and Harden employees also locked their doors continuously all day long for their safety. The Body of Christ has been vandalized three times. Things are stolen from the church. People are consistent behind and in front of the church, using drugs, and leaving used needles all around the parking lot. Pastor Williams has presented a petition for our citizens and their concern and requesting closure of the motel/ends on 301. Enterprise Runel Company has also experienced their catalytic converter stolen, people sleeping in their trucks, even though the trucks are locked at night, and then they find the person the next morning in their trucks. One lady at the front office there also said she had a stalker. So Colonial Tires has had the same problem. They've been broken into, people using their bathroom, having sex in their bathroom, using their telephones, and the owner finding needles in the parking lot also. Riggs Tire and Sales has had the same problem as Colonial Tires, used needles up and down the street, and people doing drugs all the time underneath the trees and things on 301. We have gunfire all night long in our neighborhood. We have sex offenders living next door to the children that are placed in the motel by DSS. Those children have already been uprooted from their family home, then DSS puts them in a drug-infested motel that is surrounded by drugs, pimps, sex offenders, prostitution, and gunfire in the parking lot. At the same times, the kids did not.
Go ahead. You can finish that sentence. I'll let you finish that sentence.
I'm sorry. At the same time, the kids did not get shot, but they were in the parking lot playing. And you have needles all over the parking lot. These children did not ask for this type of life. According to statistics, we have 1,471 young prisoners from the age of 18 to 21. We have 7,371 young people from the age of 22 to 25.
All right. Thank you. You only get three minutes. I'll give you a little bit more.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am. That's quite all right. Thank you.
You know what, Mr. Chair, and I, and I, and I'm sorry. I know that I'm wrong for saying this or even speaking at this time, but there's a number of residents that came with Ms. Slappy, and this is not, could you stand, please? This is an issue that's been ongoing, ongoing, talking to the Sheriff's Department, talking to a number of the Commissioners coming here to meet, meeting with the Fayetteville Observer, having ABC TV to go out and film the area. They've been pressing and pressing time and time again for something to be done there. And they haven't seen anything done yet. And so my hope and prayer is that we really listen to what the problems that they are having out there, because this has been going on for some years now, because I know, because I've been dealing with them. And so if we can't get back to them with some kind of direction on to move forward in helping them, I will be grateful. They will be very grateful because it's disturbing their neighborhood. And that's what we're here for, to take care of them.
And I do understand that. So Commissioner Evans, I'll let you take the lead on that.
I have been taking the lead, sir.
And I'll be able to do that. So I'm glad you brought that up. And I'll let you take the lead, and we will help you in any way we can.
Well, I tell you what, whenever we set up a meeting with the sheriff and the sheriff obliged and set it up with us, and we try to get things done, then we have people that come behind us and just tear apart what was done, especially about the hotels. The hotels are terrible.
Thank you.
They are terrible. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you all for coming. Our next speaker.
Our second speaker is Pastor Dennis Williams.
Dennis Williams?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, he did not come tonight. He did not show up, but I do have a petition. There's 282 names on this petition.
Ty, if you can get that and we'll, we'll have that. Thank you. We'll give that to the clerk. She'll make sure we get it. Next speaker.
Our third speaker is Mr. Roman Price.
Mr. Price? Are we going down quickly, huh? Our next speaker.
Our fourth speaker is Mr. Sean McMillan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sean McMillan, 624 Golden Range Drive. I'm going to start just with a quote this evening. Freedom is not a state, it is an act. It is not some enchanted garden perched high on a distant plateau where we can finally sit down and rest. Freedom is a continuous action we must all take, and each generation must do its part to create an even more fair and more just society. It's a quote by late Congressman John Lewis. And two things I wanted to talk to you about today are mental health response to a mental health crisis and independent oversight. You all have seen me at least twice to speak about independent oversight. In the news right now, there's a lot going on as far as our response to mental health crisis. It's in the news because one of the cities in Cumberland County, Fayetteville, has had issues with the FPD in response. What we're looking for is a response that's humane, a response that preserves life. And unfortunately, in the last few months, we've lost two people who were in mental health crisis, one Jada Johnson in July, the other Justin Livestay just last month. There were people whose family members reached out for help, thinking they were going to get help, and they got the police. And the encounters ended up being lethal, as many are, and many of you have seen, living here in Cumberland County. I want to say that's not a problem that's isolated in Fayetteville. That's a county-wide problem. You can look at the death of Joshua Oxendine, who we spoke to you about years ago. He was somebody who was in mental health crisis as well. Sheriff's deputies and the FPD responded, and his, his life was taken the night that he went through his crisis. We're here to say that there's a better way, that we don't have to respond with law enforcement solely. The cities all over the United States are waking up to realize that mental health crises should be responded to by mental health professionals. If all you have is a hammer, everything looks like a nail. Our police are not trained, and even if they are trained, they're not mental health professionals. We're sending them to handle a job that shouldn't be theirs. Come to the county with the realization that many of the resources, especially when it comes to mental health response reside with the county. I ask you to consider that the CCSO is in just as much need as a service that dispatches mental health professionals as the FPD is, if not more. One of the things I have in evidence is that, one of the things that got us involved in mental health crisis response as activists was a case back in 2018 where the CCSO responded to shooting, and it resulted in a young man being shot and left to bleed for about 20 minutes and being overcharged. And he was just going through a mental health crisis response. So this is a problem here. I hope that you craft policy that addresses it and put the resources towards it that it deserves. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Wayne Buck Bullock.
I'm Wayne Lamar Bullock, or known as Buck Bullock or Buck Bull. Nice to meet all of you. I know some of you by trade. I'm not dead against what we're going to talk about, but zoning out there and stuff. There have been five houses built not a couple of years ago. I know one guy's already pumping his septic tank out. That's water problem. Something's wrong. I've had water trouble. Okay. By zoning it in RR, that's going to put it, what, half acre? RR is for half acre. I did it a few years ago. It cost me $500 for each lot I did. I did nine. So it costs me. But I'm not against it. And I just want to find out. I want somebody to get that with me tonight before we leave. I've got an irrigation hole right where it's coming, where the, where they're going to be able to have us. I just dug it out. It's a big pond now. Am I going to have to cover that thing back up? Or they're going to put a fence through there to kind of keep somebody from getting, I don't want nobody to get killed, but it's a shame to push trees and dirt and all right back in after spending all that money. I had bought some land, if I could buy all the land around there. They won't get no closer than they're getting going to be.
I do understand that.
I bought some. It's my youngest inheritance. What good use is it? They're going to get it sooner or later. But, you know, I'm not dead against developing, but just do it right, will you please? Because, believe me, I told before, you know, they said State Highway can take care of things. Y'all hadn't heard a story. They wouldn't help me dig a 20, 20-some-hundred-foot ditch to drain water. Okay, I left about 60 or 70 feet off the right of way. And guess what happened one day when I was gone? State came out there and dug it and hooked it up to the county ditch there and hauled the dirt off. If they'd have left the dirt, I wouldn't have been half as mad. But, you know, just stuff like that. You know, it's just, you understand where I'm coming from?
Yes, sir.
Just please help, keep your eye out, and don't let nothing. And I know these, these guys are trying to get this developed. And if it's done right, it'll probably be okay. Okay? I got 31 seconds. Can we give it to somebody else? That should do it.
Thank you.
I can't think of another. But I do want somebody, a lawyer. I know there's a lawyer somewhere.
He's somewhere around here.
I want you to see me before I leave. Let me know what kind of mess I'm going to be in at the development and put the houses, it's going to be right up against that irrigation hole.
I think Mr. Flowers will probably be willing to talk to you. So there he is over there. I see him over there.
We'll talk later now. We'll make plans to talk. Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock.
On the buzzer.
All right. Right on the buzzer.
Our last speaker this evening is Mr. Chaleko Hurst.
And I know he knows the three minutes. So come on up, Mr. Chink.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Fellow citizens. I'm going to run through this, because like you say, we have three minutes. Mr. McMillan, he addressed the issue of the mental health. It's not just for veterans, but also our citizens are suffering the same plight as far as overzealous law enforcement. We also recently had a spouse of a military vet who professed that in her household, her husband has serious mental health, mental health issues, but she's afraid to call law enforcement because she doesn't want him assaulted or killed. These are our citizens. We need concerning law enforcement in this city because, once again, Fayetteville is in national news, national news because of your law enforcement. A young lady was in her car, took some pictures, doing her job, what her supervisor told her to do. They trying to snatch her out of the car when she still has her seatbelt on. Once again, we're in the news, whether it be the killing of unarmed citizens or one of the citizens being assaulted by overzealous law enforcement. Also, let me bring up, because Citizens brought it to my attention, that, that funding is not adequate for those who need help with their electric bill, because the criteria is set so low that for one fiscal year, the citizen that needs help, the cutoff is $600. We need to raise that because we have the surplus, we have the funds to help these citizens. And it hasn't even got code yet. Also, let me bring up lastly, this is 2022, Article 5, Section 4 in the North Carolina Constitution. We still have the black literacy test in 2022. It doesn't say Asian citizens, it doesn't say Latino citizens, it specifically says black literacy test. In Spring Lake, we have a mayor that's under assault by the North Carolina Treasurer because she seeked to hire the individual who used to be the town manager in Kenley in law enforcement force walked off their job. There's nothing wrong with the professionalism and ideas that that town manager was trying to implement down in Kenley. But here we is, we have a minority lady who was blessed to be mayor under assault by officials from the state government in North Carolina. Also, right here in North Carolina, from 1940 to 1988, they were illegally sterilizing black women. And the reason why that is important to me, because I'm a black child. That's it?
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank everyone for being able to come out and give us your comments. We do take those under consideration. So I want to thank you, each and every one of you all for coming out here. We did not go unheeded what you said, and I think everybody has taken stock of that, and we will move forward with that. That will take us to our presentations. And our first presentation, Madam Manager, is the Cumberland Community Foundation. And it's an overview by Mary Holmes, who's the President and CEO of the Cumberland Community Foundation. I asked her to come and give us a, just a review of what Cumberland Community Foundation does. But also, as this is what we in October, heading into November, a number of our kids are filling out applications to go to college. And the FASC is very, is, right now is on everyone's mind, and Cumberland Community Foundation has been a leader in helping us get that word out. And just the essential funding that they do to programs that enhance the quality of life in every corner of Cumberland County is just to be applauded. So I present to everyone, Mary Holmes, President and CEO of Cumberland Community Foundation. Mary Holmes.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'll also introduce my colleague, Kimmy Nettles, Program Manager at Cumberland Community Foundation. She's been with us since 2007. All right. So I'm going to quickly go through what is the Community Foundation and programs of interest to anyone who might be watching and/or here today, and then answer any questions if you have them, tying into the FASC opportunity as well. So the Cumberland Community Foundation is a catalyst to improve the quality of life, helping diverse donors contribute, a wide variety of donations to help their favorite causes and the community. So for the nonprofits in the community and students, we give scholarships and grants. For donors, we provide endowment management services, help them with their legacy and their impact, help them with their tax management through gift planning, endowment management, advised fund management, charitable remainder trust, and so on. Cumberland Community Foundation was started in 1980 with a very generous gift from Dr. Lucille Houtaff, who saw the Winston-Salem Foundation at work in Winston-Salem when she was a professor of medicine there. And she wanted to create the same kind of organization for her community and founded Cumberland Community Foundation. It's a 501(c)(3) charitable organization, a public charity. In the last 42 years, we have granted over $80 million in scholarships and grants to the benefit of this community. Sometimes even the county of Cumberland is a beneficiary. Every year, we're audited and accredited, accountable steward, governed by a volunteer board. And don't worry, Commissioners, elected officials are not allowed to serve on our board. Donations come from individuals, families, civic groups, family businesses, charitable organizations. It is not government money. People who want others to have a better life contribute to Cumberland Community Foundation. And it's not always based on the economy. Last two months, we've gotten $7 million in gifts. Our mission is giving together to enhance the quality and spirit of community life. The most common gift is $100 to an existing fund at the foundation. Many of our Commissioners have given to funds at the foundation. The largest individual gift we've ever received was from the estate of Robert Short, Bob Short, who left $10.5 million in his will to send local students to college. Most of what we manage on behalf of donors is endowments. There's a lot of information on our website. We're a very transparent organization. Here's some links to some of the things that might be of interest. Top one is how to donate online. Feel free to create a recurring donation to any of the funds that we manage. Tonight, I'm going to talk about the scholarship program, the free application for federal student aid, our community grants program, Giving Tuesday 2022, Endowment Management, and Community Impact. Our scholarship program was started in 1992. We managed 60-plus endowments for different donors who have created scholarships at the Community Foundation. We grant over $700,000 every year in scholarships. So it's grown significantly over the last few years. These funds were created by individuals, families, civic groups, sororities, fraternities, and they donate $25,000 or more to create an endowed scholarship. We invest that $25,000 or more. The income from the investment is what gets distributed annually. The original gift is there, the principal is not invaded, and it's an endowment. So there's money every year to award. This is a typical May photo for us. One of our largest scholarships is the Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity. They, these gentlemen and the older gentleman in the photo are the ones who donated the money, along with their other fraternity brothers. And the club itself donates as well. And every year, four or five students receive the income from the distribution of the fund. Scholarship applications are available online twice a year. They do not need to call the Cumberland Community Foundation. They need to go to CumberlandCF.org and click on scholarships and learn how to apply and look at the different opportunities. We have volunteer selection committees that serve without conflict of interest and read the applications and select the best candidate according to what the scholarship that the donor designed. We notify the student with instructions how to apply, and then we receive proof of enrollment from the student and pay the scholarship directly to and pay the scholarship directly to the college. We promote it through news outlets, packets mailed to guidance counselors. We send information to the Central Office of Cumberland County Schools, and we have an e-newsletter at the Community Foundation. If anyone would like to receive our monthly newsletter, they just go to our website and click Sign Up at the bottom. I mentioned our largest gift was from the estate of Robert Short. We have applications available from his scholarship endowment every fall. The applications will be available on November 1st, and the deadline to apply is December 5th. This fund is in, these awards are made in memory of Bob Short, and it's awarded, the points are equally allocated based on financial need, academics, and community service or work history. It's up to $7,500 a year per student, up to four years. And as I mentioned, it's over $400,000 a year awarded. And we still have the original gift of Mr. Short. So that's the power of endowment. He donated $10.5 million. His fund is 13 million now, and we've already awarded 7 million from his fund. Students must complete the free application for federal student aid in order to apply for the Robert Short Scholarship or any scholarships at the Community Foundation. And so I would say that most scholarship programs that are need-based in the country require the FAFSA application. And that's where the Commissioners and your network can really help students in this community. So what is this FAFSA we're talking about? All you have to do is go to FAFSA.org, or if you can't remember that, StudentAid.gov. It takes you to the same place. It's a federal, it's the application so that you can get the federal Pell Grant. The Pell Grant is up to $6,895 that the students do not have to pay back. It is not a loan, it is a grant to the student. And we had, in 2021, only 56% of our students were completing the FAFSA. 56%. I don't know what the current number is, but... So anyway, there's free money out there. We've got to help kids apply, and it's a complicated application. So it's getting better, but our students need help completing them. We don't do it at the foundation. We just fuss at everybody else about helping kids to do it because we have a very small staff. So we're urging educators, anyone who has a link, a network, to students and their parents to please encourage completion of the FAFSA. But again, it's a grant, not a loan, and it's $6,895 per year. So if you click on FAFSA.org or Student Aid, this is the webpage that it goes, and you can just see it says Apply Now. Community Grants is another program of Cumberland Community Foundation. This is the payout from the unrestricted endowments of Cumberland Community Foundation. So Jane and John Doe, they want to give back to the community. They care about people. They want to help people they'll never meet. They create the Jane and John Doe Community Endowment. And fortunately, we do have a lot of those kind of endowments at Cumberland Community Foundation. There's so many good people in this community who want to help others. Our strategic plan goal number two is make grants that maximize impact. And these grants are available from the payout from the investment income from these unrestricted endowments to 501(c)(3) charitable organizations based in Cumberland County or qualified units of local government. We do not make grants to individuals. So if somebody needs help with their heating bill, they need to call some of the many wonderful 501(c)(3) organizations that do case management, like Fayetteville Urban Ministry or Action Pathways. There's organizations like that, but we don't make grants. We don't do case management at the Community Foundation. We make grants to those organizations. Organizations 501(c)(3) that want to apply at the Community Foundation, right now, we do not have an open grant cycle. We're busy getting ready for Giving Tuesday, which I'm going to explain in a minute. But we do make grants for programs that will improve the quality of life of Cumberland County, big things, community-wide initiatives, programs that will leverage community resources for long-term impact, innovative projects that will address community needs with long-term solutions. For example, as it relates to the county of Cumberland, in 1984, the bond referendum failed to build the headquarters downtown. So the Cumberland Community Foundation gave $250,000 to the county to purchase the site of the main headquarters library downtown. And we raised another $750,000 so that you could do it without the bond referendum. So how does our community grants program and our goals to reduce the education attainment gap tie in? Wanted to give you a few examples of grants that we've made from our community grants. So there's a wonderful initiative across the state called My Future NC. They have data specific to Cumberland County. I've given you a sheet of information. That's the 2021 data about goals for Cumberland County. And there's a tracker, a data tracker for every county, so I highly encourage you to tap into that resource. But regarding closing the education achievement gap, here's a snippet of what the My Future NC group is working on in Cumberland County and certainly needs help of our school system and our county. You can go to the dashboard for MyFutureNC.org and look at our numbers. And you can see that's where I got the 56% figure for the FAFSA completion in Cumberland County. So what is Cumberland Community Foundation doing lately for college attainment? We've recently awarded a grant called the Cumberland First Scholars Initiative with Fayetteville State. It's $580,060. No, yeah, that's right. It sounded so big. $580,000 over three years to support summer school. There's many students who could go to college, could get a college degree, could contribute to our workforce and our economy who just don't have that push or they can't see their way through financially, how to get it done. We're working with Fayetteville State to increase graduation for Cumberland County students. And they have a wonderful summer school program to get kids straight from high school into summer school. They have something called Bronco Boost. So anyway, we're part of that and helping fund the summer school portion of it. I asked Fayetteville State for a couple of slides about what they're doing to get the FAFSA completion increased because it's free money for our community. $6,895 per student, so we just got to get the kids to complete it and their parents because it requires a tax return of the parents to complete it. So Fayetteville State's hosting FAFSA completion events, bi-weekly communication, posters, flyers, yard signs, financial aid workshops, one-on-one appointments. They're doing analytics, they have FAFSA nights, and they're just texting, emailing, really just pushing to get the students to complete them. We're also working with Fayetteville Technical Community College on college attainment as well. We awarded them $250,000 over three years, designed kind of around the My Future NC goals, mainly to increase the FAFSA completion, increase graduation rates. It's for Cumberland County students and, you know, it's to boost the economy and help our local businesses with a workforce that's ready. So this is a slide given to me from Fayetteville Tech. Last year, they had 433 FAFSA applications that they facilitated. That's $3 million in student aid that will not have to be paid back. It's money for our local students. This year, they have 10 events planned, 13 locations, incentives, a mobile outreach bus, which is new. And they're working closely with Methodist University, Fayetteville State, Cumberland County Schools, and others. So how can County of Cumberland help? Encourage students and their parents to complete the FAFSA, align with My Future NC goals, work with local educational institutions, and track FAFSA completion in Cumberland County schools. Anything you measure is more likely to get paid attention to. So I encourage you to start looking at that. Wrapping up, we have a few other programs of interest. Giving Tuesday is a global day of giving, started in 2012. In 2020, we noticed at the Community Foundation that our local nonprofits were not participating. And so we created this online giving catalog. The first year, 67 nonprofits participated, and this year, 76 nonprofits are going to participate. We have $475,000 in matching funds available for these nonprofits. In 2020, we raised 1.2 million, and in 2021, we raised 1.6 million in a week. Okay? So this is a great initiative. The nonprofits, we're doing training for them now. The program is eligible to 501(c)(3) organizations based in Cumberland County that have received a grant in the past from Cumberland Community Foundation. So we invited about 100 organizations, and 76 are participating. So we hope you'll help us promote Giving Tuesday because these organizations are improving the quality of life in Cumberland County in so many ways. We also manage endowments for donors. If anyone wants to donate $10,000 or more when they're living or through their estate, they can create a named endowment that they design. It's $25,000 for a scholarship because colleges getting expensive. But other than that, it's a $10,000 minimum, and people can do it in their will. They can design the endowment to support any charitable organization that they want. Kimmy Nettles has supported, she created an endowment in memory of her mother, and her endowment sends low-income kids to summer camp. I created an endowment in memory of my parents, along with my siblings. And it's for the three churches that my parents were involved with during their lives. Anybody can do that, whether living or through their estate, and they just need to call the foundation. Last slide, we are a neutral convener. You may remember that during Hurricane Matthew and Hurricane Florence, no other organization stepped forward to do the community-wide fundraising. So we stepped in and raised a lot of money very quickly, distributed it 100% plus the matching funds that we distributed. We're not always seeking to wear that hat, but we are willing when needed. We do nonprofit training, capacity building, and we, our main goal is to celebrate and grow philanthropy. That's...
You missed one slide. Go back one more.
I don't know where it is.
It was Giving Together to let everybody know who was on your team.
Yeah, I must have deleted that slide. Anyway, our mission statement is giving together to enhance the quality and spirit of community life. And our number at the Community Foundation is 910-483-4449. Our website is CumberlandCF.org. And we look forward to talking to anybody who wants to create an endowment or apply for college or have information about our grant program.
Can the Commissioner have any question, comment? Commissioner Council?
I continue to be amazed, Ms. Holmes, at what you can do. There's no stopping a single determined woman. There's no stopping you. I have followed you and looked at this organization which operates with a skeleton crew of people. I don't know how you squeeze so many activities out of such a small staff. It's amazing.
It's called process mapping, not to be a geek.
But you are an asset. You are a huge asset, you and the organization.
Thank you. I would like to take credit. We have a very generous community, far more generous than other communities in our community, in our state, as measured by the study that Chronicle of Philanthropy did. And our community has really responded to the Community Foundation. People like it when their money is taken care of. You thank them promptly, and then you tell them what happened to their money. And we have good systems and community foundations all over the country. There's over 900, and we're all growing. So we have a great team.
It's amazing.
So, thank you. We actually have, Commissioner Booster, I hear, three members that served in the school system and on the school board. And I thought it was definitely important for our kids to understand, not leave money on the table with the scholarships that we start. It comes in March, and everybody knows it's coming. You can pick it up early to be able to do that, to fill out those scholarships at Cumberland Community Foundation. But the importance of right now, starting that FAFSA program, to be able to do that. Glad Fayetteville State, Fayetteville Tech has gotten into that. The Cumberland County School System is also with their guidance counselors dealing with that. And I think it's important that, that's why we invited you here, for them to be able to hear that. But also, this community to know that this organization exists and is doing great things in this community. You know, you and I talk quite frequently. And what we find out is that in this community, we may not give as much as some other communities like Wake County and Mecklenburg, but on average, the number of people who give is larger than in those communities. That talks about Cumberland County. That talks about the citizens right here and what happens in this community to be able to fuel this. Because if you look at it, we are a Tier One county, and people will say there's a bunch of poor folk down in Cumberland County. But even that, with that, we reach in our pockets and we take care of our neighbors. We take care of our friends. We take care of our church members, and we do it through Cumberland Community Foundation. Hats off to the Cumberland Community Foundation. And thank you, Mary Holmes, and thank you, Kimmy, for all that you all do, and the rest of the staff and that Board of Directors that volunteer their time to go in there because they're not getting paid. And they go volunteer their time to be able to do that, to make sure not only that people's money is there, but it's paid out right, audited right, and never had a problem with anything. I would encourage everybody to donate to Cumberland Community Foundation. Go online, find out which endowment's there. Whatever you want to be able to donate to, please do that. Thank you so very much for coming.
Thanks so much for the invitation. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that was a great presentation. That will take us to the approval of the agenda. County Manager, any changes to the agenda?
No, sir, no changes.
If not, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
That will take us to the consent agenda. Anybody have anything to pull? If not, I will take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right, that will take us to our public hearings. I'll call on the County Manager to explain the Board of Commissioners' procedures for public hearings.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening, we have several public hearings. The first one is the Spring Lake Area Land Use Plan. And we will allow all speakers to have three minutes to provide remarks or comments on these public hearings. And we ask that each speaker provide their name and their address as they approach the lectern.
Thank you, Madam Manager. That will take us to the Spring Lake Area Land Use Plan. And I'll call on the Manager to introduce our staff.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Rawls Howard, our Director of Planning and Inspections.
Thank you very much, Madam Manager. Good evening, Commissioners. It's my pleasure to be with you this evening. This is a project that staff is...
Give me one minute, allow them, go ahead so they can have the opportunity to leave. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just have a few quick words, and I'm going to pass the baton over to my Comprehensive Planning Manager, this gentleman sitting right here named Trey Smith, who's been working with our staff for the last year on the Spring Lake Plan. This is a plan that we're very excited about. It's taken us a little bit over a year to get it up and running. It just recently, in August, went to the Spring Lake Town Board, who adopted it with a unanimous vote. So Spring Lake currently is our oldest plan. It's about 20 years old is the current one. As a best practice, we should be updating our plans about every five years. So Spring Lake had a 2002 plan, so this will bring him to 2022. So as I said before, I didn't want to take too much of Trace Thunder here, so I'm going to pass the baton to him and let him walk through the PowerPoint presentation so you can see what's going on with Spring Lake in today's times. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
As Rawls mentioned, this was approved by the, this plan was approved by the Spring Lake Town Board unanimously, but also the Joint Planning Board recommended adoption unanimously prior to that. The Spring Lake Area Land Use Plan is located in the northwest portion of... portion of the county. A large portion of the plan is surrounded by Fort Bragg. The plan area comprises approximately twelve thousand five hundred acres. I was going back to that, I thought I had, as you see, the town of Spring Lake, and then the county portion is, I thought I had a pointer here, but, yeah, okay. The county portion is this area out here, with the town of Spring Lake being this area in here. The vision and goals, I'm gonna go over the brief sections of the plan, a very brief summary. The vision and goals section, the Spring Lake Area Plan envisions a future where there's a thriving Main Street, high-quality housing, economic opportunity, activities for family residences, and a sense of community. They wanted a destination, not a drive-thru. Into today's section of the plan, this covers existing conditions, engagement results, and online outreach. We looked at population demographics. The town of Spring Lake makes up approximately seventy-four percent of the planned area. It's a relatively young planned area. Ages twenty to twenty-nine is the most populous age bracket, followed by ages thirty to thirty-nine. We looked at housing demographics. There's approximately five thousand nine sixty-three residential units in the Spring Lake area. Eighty-six of them, eighty-six percent of them were occupied as of two thousand and twenty. We looked at economic development and labor demographics, statistics. The majority of the commercial activity in the planned area occurs in the town, and armed forces make up forty-one percent of the town labor force. Public engagement, in May of two thousand and twenty-one, the steering committee comprised of thirteen members met and was convened, and they met monthly for about a year. I'm gonna get a little bit more into public engagement in another slide, but as always with these plans, we do a SWOT analysis to try to capture the strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities and threats of the area. Just some of the highlights are strengths were significant community potential, abundance of potential for businesses to come, with presence of vacant land and buildings. Couple of weaknesses were lack of grocery options, lack of retail options. Some opportunities identified were expansion to the community facilities, such as community swimming pool or skating rink, provide for more family events. And several threats identified were high taxes, high water bills, roads, and utility access.
Can you go back a minute?
Certainly.
So, they put a strength as the traffic flow, because people just keep going right through Spring Lake. I mean, that would be, to me-
Can't get off that road.
You can't, I mean, it's hard. I can't even stop at McDonald's. I have to go all the way up to-
Some of those, you can, you can qualify them as a strength or a weakness, but in that aspect, it was captured as a strength. Another, to summarize some additional engagement results, we had a public, our first kickoff meeting was with a hundred-plus attendees at the community kickoff meeting. We had over three thousand words to answer, open-ended questions that were gathered on our website. There were forty-one attendees across four stakeholder meetings, where we had stakeholders from various public health, police, fire, economic development. And then at the draft review session, we had over forty-two attendees as well, a drop-in session. Something we've done in this plan that we haven't done previously is, we created a website, staff created a website from the very beginning, and we put surveys and questionnaires and kept, with the attempt to keep the public updated on the progress of the plan. We had a calendar showing events and times, draft plans, and comment sections for them to review online. Over the course of the year, we had over five thousand four hundred views of the website, with an average view count of about fifteen daily. You can see that some of the peaks and valleys of, you know, when the notifications went out, there was a higher count, and in between there, the higher days and lower days. The tomorrow section of the plan includes the future land use map and land use classifications. This is the future land use, draft future land use map. The county portion, as you, is this area out here. The darker color yellow is mostly called for low-density residential, which has the associated zoning districts of R-15 down to R-75, with the greenish color here being suburban density residential, with associated zoning districts. The colors don't really translate as much as they do on the original map, but the suburban density residential, this area in here, is rain, associated zoning districts are R-30 down to RR. Some of the gray areas, if you'll notice, I'll get to these in a few, in a minute, but some of these gray areas, they're called, what's called flex areas, and I'll get back to that in a slide in just a second. But here's a, we have a breakdown here of the land use classifications by percentage of the future land use map. Thirty-five percent here is low-density, twenty-four percent suburban density, and this includes the town of Spring Lake, so there's five percent commercial and six percent flex area, which I'm getting to here. Land use classification, flex areas, flex areas are a land use classification that's utilized in underdeveloped, undeveloped or underdeveloped areas. There are six flex areas in this future land use plan, making up six percent of the total planned area. The intent is, as development occurs and the flex areas fill in, the scope of what's allowed in the rest of the space may change. The rationale behind that is, Spring Lake and the planned area have a finite amount of available land. There's a desire to maximize economic opportunity in the area, and boundaries between land use classes are sometimes arbitrary and can be more fluid. There's three located within the town of Spring Lake. It's located close to downtown, here, here, and here. The ones in the county, there are three in the county, flex area four, five, and six. Flex area four is about three hundred and fifty acres. It's ideal for potential industrial sites, mixed-use developments, and certain residential developments. Flex area five is ideal for residential or commercial services. It's approximately forty-three acres. And flex area six is ideal for a combination of commercial development, mixed use, and residential uses, and it's approximately two hundred and sixty-five acres.
Can you go back two maps and show me where that three hundred and fifty acres is?
Certainly. This is, this is closer into town. There's parcels here owned by the town for a future park. There's a wastewater treatment facility and industrial park here. This is all-
So, it's not all together?
No, no, sir. It's, it's there, you see, this has the aerial photography type overlay.
Hold on, Commissioner Keith had a-
It's on two ten.
Okay, so, first question, where we at, three hundred and fifty acres? All right, so these flex spaces here, are, is that all one parcel owned by, who's that owned, is it all one, that-
They're all, a common theme is, yes, most of them, they're not all owned by one individual, but they are mostly owned by one individual in most instances. For example, I believe this one here has maybe three owners, somebody in the town of Spring Lake, somebody in-
I did go on that time. Which one?
Sir?
Oh, right there, okay.
Which one?
Okay, so, are these actually in the town of Spring Lake?
These aren't. Flex areas four, five, and six are in the county jurisdiction. Yes, sir.
And does our economic development people know about these spots?
Yes, sir, they do. They-
What's the challenge of it? Because I'm hearing all the time that we're running out of inventory.
Well, the economic development was very positive about these flex areas because they're, they're large undeveloped tracts, mostly undeveloped or underdeveloped tracts, and it leaves, gives that flexibility. We didn't want to just say this parcel here would be high-density residential, and then when someone comes in for a request that might be industrial or without, it ties it down to that one type of use. The idea is to be able to give a range that may be suitable, with the idea that when someone comes in and establishes a certain type of development in that location, then that's the way the rest of that area, you have to plan accordingly, based on the initial large development in that, on that piece of land. Flex area five is smaller, it's forty-two acres. This is close up to the Harlot County line. It, it is adjacent to some existing residential development and already, already existing commercial uses in Harlot County just across the line. The next largest one is a flex area six. This is out, the further out portion of the county. It's out, there's a future school location here, and there's existing low-density housing.
A what, then?
School.
I'm sorry. There's a proposed school here. This is not too far from-
That's okay.
I, I'll go back. I've got the more location details, in case y'all, I was prepared. This is largely undeveloped, connects the busy Ramsey Street corridor and the future side of New Cumberland County School. Water lines are brought down from Harlot County, present in the area.
Okay, just over on the other side, okay. I got you.
But, like I said-
Just near the four one side.
Right, and like, like I said, going back to-
Elliott Bridge Road over that way.
Okay, all right, so, okay.
Yeah, going back, we just didn't want to make a one land use classification, and that would be the only thing. We wouldn't allow for some flexibility with how these properties are developed moving forward.
Got you.
Land use classifications, compatibility considerations. This plan goes into extreme detail on each land use classification. It goes, it talks about compatible zoning districts, consider, land use policy considerations, suggested policy updates, and then gives other recommendations for each land use classification. Then it also has a page on each one regarding flex area considerations and any other significant pertinent topics. The beyond section of the plan has, contains the recommendations and resources. There's seventy-nine new recommendations organized by topic, then priority. The resources are tabulated, a list of available community resources, have, including grants, technical assistance, and business loans. For the sake of brevity, I'm not going to go into these in detail, but some of the higher priority recommendations were residential, update the sidewalk requirements, Spring Lake MIA to match the town of Spring Lake sidewalk requirements, commercial, make the following, some of these are Spring Lake, town of Spring Lake specific, but make the following additions to the table of permissible uses to allow for farmer's market, flex office, outdoor movie theaters, and specific commercial activities. That's all I have for you. I was trying to be as brief as possible to give an overview. It's a long, extensive plan.
We got it. I mean, it was emailed, so we all-
Right.
-had an opportunity to read it, and-
But if you have any questions, I would be more than happy to answer them for you.
Any questions or comments? Commissioner Keith?
Sure. All right, well, first of all, thanks. I do have, I, I think even by your presentation here, we realize there's a lot of challenges in that area. Most of it being the age, which, everybody should figure out, that's because of the soldiers. That they, the, the low age of twenty to twenty-nine is, and I see that it has over seventy percent rental?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Which is a lot higher than the county average. Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So, we've got the rental rate, we've got the age, and we've got, what percentage was it of people who actually work on Fort Bragg?
I think it was at forty, forty-two, forty-three percent.
It was the biggest percentage that was there.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, with, you know, putting it in there. So, I mean, as Commissioner Adam, or Chairman Adams said earlier, getting through Spring Lake is easy. Stopping in Spring Lake is hard.
Right.
And, you know, that's a challenge that they didn't plan for. That was, you know, when two ninety-five came through. But was Fort Bragg, I mean, since there's such an impact, or I guess Fort Liberty now, right?
Fort Liberty.
Are we officially Fort Liberty? But were they involved in this? And the reason I'm asking is because we didn't really talk about it, but so many of their citizens obviously live there, and many of the quality of life things that the town wants to implement are available, you know, as an active-duty soldier-
Yes, sir.
-on base. So, it's, it's hard, it's hard when you don't have as many homeowners investing in your community.
Right. To answer your question, yes, sir. We had multiple representatives of, from Fort Bragg, I believe two, possibly three of which were on the thirteen-member steering committee. And we were in constant contact with those representatives throughout the planning process, from kickoff meeting all the way to draft review. They were a very helpful and integral part of the planning process.
Okay. All right, with that, I will open the public hearing on the Spring Lake Area Land Use Plan. Are there any speakers, Madam Clerk?
There are no speakers.
I will close the public hearing, and I would ask if there is a motion to approve the Spring Lake Area Land Use Plan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
It's unanimous.
That's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. That will take us, Madam Manager, to our public hearings on our street naming. The first one is case SNO four nine seven.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So, this is a street naming case, case SNO four nine seven. As a matter of fact, well, this particular case is, is, is being prompted by the construction of I-295, but as a fact, for all four of the cases that you're going to hear tonight are in relatively the same area, and they're all because of the two ninety-five extension or expansion along in this area. So, this particular project, as you can see, is located just where the two ninety-five is coming in, just on the southwestern part of Hope Mills. That's a new interchange that was constructed. You can see here, actually, he's got a pointer, so I'm gonna use the pointer. So, as you can see, the, this road was, has come in from DOT. They had built this roundabout here, and so what you're going to see this evening is just a number of street namings that are associated with this interchange in this right here. But what we're hearing today is this proposed street right here, which was formerly Lake Upchurch Road, is proposed to be renamed to Calabash Drive. Staff had contacted the owners that abutted that portion of Lake Upchurch Road. There were twenty-seven property owners that were contacted, and Calabash Drive received the decisive vote over the options that we gave to the owners that were out there. So, this is, this is a little bit more of a close-up. As you can see, a number of these houses just sit off of cul-de-sacs, and they're not directly addressed onto that street, but, you know, being the fact that they butted up against it, they had to get the notices. But the places where you see the addresses are the ones that were really had the vote in the matter, because their driveway is directly accessed this piece of property. So, also wanted to point out, because I think it was brought up by Commissioner Booth in the last meeting, about the land and addresses. Not everybody has an address. If it's a vacant piece of land, it does not have an address. When there's a structure that's placed on that property, then it receives an address for E-911 purposes. So, I thought I would clarify that, because it was brought up the last time we did one of these. So, this is the property itself. As you can see, we have the sign out there posted as per the general statutes for requirement of advertising, but you can see the street here. This is looking more in a, in a west-by-northwest direction along the street. This is standing at the intersection. So, again, I-295 came in split, Lake Upchurch Road, and the E-911 system simply will not allow us to have two roads that were split in half, so we have to rename it, whether it's Calabash or whatever. It has to have a name to it. So, Calabash Drive got the decisive vote. I'll try to answer any questions if you have any.
So, they don't get to make a recommendation? Y'all just gave them some names?
We give them names, but there's actually one on here where we gave them, and they came back, and they, and we took their name.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, so you'll see that here shortly.
All right. I will open the public hearing. Are there any speakers, Madam Clerk?
There are no speakers.
I will close the public hearing, and I'll take a motion to approve the street name change.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
That will take us to case number SNO four nine eight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just keeping in the same line of thinking, what we just heard, this is also in the same area. This is Glen Road. If you guys remember, we did Glen Road a while back, so this is that same general area.
Say it again, say it again.
Glen Road.
G-L-A-N.
Yeah, it's right there.
I'm voting for that one.
Right. So-
Wherever it's at. Good road, I gotta make sure.
No, we don't, we don't even need to hear that.
Right. So, Glen Road got renamed, and then we have Black Bridge Road in the same area, but when they, when they created this roundabout right here with the splitting of I-295, it cut Black Bridge Road off and segmented that. So, the portion that we're looking at for this particular case here is the one that you can see highlighted in red, where the little blue line that says proposed street to be renamed. So, again, staff contacted the parcel owners that abutted the old portion of Black Bridge Road. There were sixteen property owners we contacted, and Swamp Rose Road was the name that received the decisive vote out of the ones that we provided for the owners. So, this is a little bit more of a close-up. So, you can see Black Bridge Road here. It used to extend this way, but then DOT came in, built the roundabout, cut the street off, so we have to give a new street name for this section. This is standing at the newly constructed road the DOT built. Going back, as you can see, it kind of curves off to the left and goes back in here. This is it, curves back into the road. You can see the streets, the public advertising sign that we put up per general statutes. This is standing at the same intersection. You get a little bit more of a good viewpoint on the straightaway that heads down that road. So, it is what it is, Swamp Rose Road. So, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer where I can.
Swamp Rose Road. I will open the public hearing. Are there any speakers, Madam Clerk?
There are no speakers.
I will close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion for the approval of the street name change.
So moved, sir.
Is there a second?
I will second, even though I had questions about that name, but if they like it, I like it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I feel you.
I feel you.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
Been on that road.
As long as you don't come in with a connect, the street's named Adams.
I think we're moving on to four ninety-nine, okay?
This takes us to case SNO four nine nine.
Yes, sir, so again, in the same area, south of Hope Mills Road. This is one where we actually went out to the property owners with suggestions, and they came back with a name that they had picked for, uh, for, you know, for what they wanted out there. So again, here's Glen Road, this is the roundabout that I had just mentioned before, here's the new-
So I guess, wait a minute, did you recommend that last thing?
Which one?
Yep, that Swamp Rose?
That was one that was on our list, yeah, that we just pick them at random, to be honest with you, Commissioner, so-
I'm gonna figure out who got there, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Don't entertain that, please.
So, uh, as you can see, th- this interchange got built, and it's my understanding that I believe that Plank Road used to continue through here to some degree. I two ninety-five had cut this off, and so DOT provided a new road heading up in this area for the owners that were out there. Uh, four property owners were contacted, we did give out staff-initiated names. They came back and had requested the name Monroe Jackson Lane. I believe that there are, that's a family name for the families that live on that road out there. Uh, so it was a name that was not taken off of our list, so we acquiesced and said that that had received the decisive vote for the name. Um, this is a little bit more of a blow-up, you can see that the area in blue, Plank Road, came through here like this, DOT built this road off of the interchange you can see here in, in blue, and we got to assign names for the road so we can E nine-one-one address out there. So this is standing on the, on, on the new road, it actually looks really nice. So you're standing on the intersection, this is going back in, into the property, you can see the posting that we have here, per general statutes. Uh, that's the only picture that I have, so if you have any questions, I'll try to answer what I can for that.
Any questions? I will open the public hearing, are there any speakers, Madam Clerk?
There are no speakers.
I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve the name change.
So move.
Is there a second?
To Monroe Jackson Lane.
Alright, all those in favor?
Unanimous. Voting in favor, Commissioners Lancaster, Council Chairman Adams, Commissioner Keith voting in opposition, Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
Thank you.
That will take us to street naming case SNO five hundred.
Okay, finally, for the street naming, um, bear with me just a second. Same area, there's I, I two ninety-five, just like we just heard the case before for Monroe Jackson Lane here, we have to rename this portion here of the old Plank Road. Uh, so again, this is all due to the I, you know, I two ninety-five, um, project. Staff contacted the parcel owners that abutted this portion of the road. Uh, there were seven property owners that were contacted. Uh, we did not receive a response from any of the property owners, so staff made the choice to put the, uh, name as per our list that we have for road names, and we selected Impala Drive for the name of the road. This is a little bit more of a close-up, you see the intersection here. These are the four owners that had it off of Old Plank Road that on, uh, with your approval would go to Impala Drive. This is standing at the road, looking back, there's a sign for advertising. That's pretty much it.
Alright, I will open the public hearing, are there any speakers, Madam Clerk?
There are no speakers.
I will close the public hearing and take a motion to approve.
A move that we named this street Impala Drive.
Is there a second?
Name it what?
Impala Drive. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Mr. Chair, if, um, if you would allow me to go back to where the one that I voted against, let me explain that. Since it was being named for an individual, I, I did not have any history on this individual or the family. And I just thought that, since sometimes we go back and we change the name of Fort Bragg in other places because we find out later on, and there's a reason why we don't want that name there. And so that's the reason why I did not vote for the naming of that road for that family. I just don't know.
Thank you.
I just don't know.
Alright. Thank you. That will take us to the public hearing on our, our fiscal twenty, uh, program grant and resolution. This is not you, Mr. Ross.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, you can, you need to sit down there. I think this is, this is Mr. Hank now. And Mr. Hank, we know we heard, uh, uh, this, this is on, um, the fifty-three eleven program, uh, grant, um, with transportation, uh, that was done at the, um, agenda setting conference the other day, which was, uh, videoed, so, um, does anybody have any questions or comments? Commissioner Keith?
Thank you. Um, at the meeting, um, I asked how that budget worked over from last year, and whether you spent that much money, or you have money left over.
Yes, I, I did request the information from Ms. Faricon, who runs the program. And the program from last year cost a total of around eight hundred, just over eight hundred thousand dollars. It was maybe a hundred and seventy-five dollars and change, but it was eight hundred thousand, um, plus a hundred and, and change. We are, uh, increasing ridership requests every day this year. We're trying to get back to pre-COVID numbers for the entire program. And as you recall, a few months ago, when we were trying to increase the number of operators and subcontractors that we use to provide trips, we did increase from two to four contracting companies, and I expect the numbers to go much higher than eight hundred thousand dollars this year, for this fiscal year that we're in.
And what was the total amount, uh, we're just talking about one section for the public hearing tonight, but you get grants from other areas?
That is correct.
So what, what's the total amount that this public transportation program is going to, um, what, what is your budget, um, for the total?
The total budget this year is just over or around a million dollars, but we still have the ability to request additional grant funding amounts for each one of these individual grant programs that you see, the road program, section fifty-three ten, section fifty-three oh seven. We can ask for increases as we need them.
Okay.
But primarily, this public hearing is just for the fifty-three eleven, which is the administrative program grant.
Understood, thank you.
Alright.
Alright, any other questions or comments? If not, I will open the public hearing on the fifty-year twenty, twenty-four fifty-three eleven program grant and resolution, are there any speakers, Madam Clerk?
There are no speakers.
I will close the public hearing, and I will entertain, uh, a motion to approve, uh, uh, the, uh, grant and the company resolution that we had.
So move, Mr. Shin.
Alright, is there a second?
Second, yeah.
Alright, it's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
That is unanimous, thank you. Alright, that will take us to our zoning cases, Madam Manager, if you will read, uh, um, our rules on zoning cases.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, arguments by the proponents and opponents shall be limited to a maximum of ten minutes for each side. If arguments are presented by a group representative, his or her presentation shall be limited to a maximum period of five minutes. If there is no group represent, representative, each speaker shall be allotted a maximum of three minutes until the ten-minute time limit is attained. Rebutts will only be permitted at the discretion of the chairman with a maximum of one three-minute presentation by each side, thank you.
Thank you, um, Madam Manager. That will take us to, um, zoning case twenty-two, hm, twenty-two zero zero four three.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Before I get started into these rezoning cases, uh, I do want to acknowledge I do have Mr. Stan Crumpler here, who is the chairman of the planning board, who's sitting back in the audience with his wife. So we'll get started on this, as you can see, this is, uh, um, case Z O N twenty-two dash oh oh four three. You can see by the highlighted star where this is located, just off of Highway twenty-four, uh, heading out toward the Stedman area. Uh, the applicant owner is, is AstraKell International Limited. Uh, the agent is Mr. George Rose, and the request itself is you, is to go from A-one agricultural to RR rural residential district conditional zoning. So with the, with the conditional zoning, that does mean that there's a site plan that is attached to this, which I'll present here in just a second. So, as it stands per the application, is a one-hundred-and-ninety-five unit single-family lots in two phases for about, for just a little over, uh, a hundred and six acres. You can see, I don't know if we still have the pointer up here, here it is. So you can see by the highlighted section, this is Hummingbird Place here, or Road. You can see this is Maxwell Road, this is Highway twenty-four, so this sits pretty much at the intersection. Uh, for those of you that travel out there, it's a pretty busy area. Uh, you, you can see, uh, it's a combination of multitude of parcels that come off the corner here that touch both Hummingbird and Maxwell. So the, the actual property itself is, is just largely vacant, meaning that it's just wooded. There's not, uh, any type of identified, uh, home or any type of uses other than you can see right here, we have a single-family home, but for the most part, you have the Colt Crossing Shopping Center sitting right across the street, and then you have, uh, sort of a hodgepodge, that's the Baywood area out there, the Baywood Country Club. And then you have, um, some manufactured homes across the street and some storage, but, uh, in general, it's a, it's a fairly large piece of property that's heavily wooded right now. When you look at the zoning map, it gives you a little bit more of a starker contrast when you're looking at the colors. Uh, but A-one is primarily the predominant zoning that you can see here, but RR is the zoning that is pretty much completely surrounding the, uh, this sort of triangle or triad piece right here. Uh, you, you do have R-six up here in the Baywood area with these townhomes right there. Uh, so there is water and sewer, so down here at this intersection right now, there is some water and sewer lines. So by the subdivision ordinance, if approved, that the owner would have to be able to extend it. We have talked with the applicant, and you will hear that their plan is to extend the water and sewer lines into this subdivision, if approved, to build home construction. So you can see that it's sitting right here. You also have it up into the, um, subdivision up here in Baywood, but I, I mean, I don't know what the easement, uh, type of situation is up there. We're anticipating a lot of utilities is going to be driven right here on the corner and just extended into that site.
Is that PWC, or is that?
I believe it is.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe it is. So, when we looked at the plan, it's subject to the Eastover Land Use Plan, uh, the associated districts that were deemed to be acceptable here would be R-twenty, RR, R-thirty, and R-forty. Uh, that contemplates a minimum lot size in general, if you look at the smallest portion of about twenty thousand square feet. Uh, they, uh, there's an encouragement to use some techniques that preserve the rural character of the area and to encourage more than one means of ingress and egress. So, we did sit down with the applicant, and, uh, staff spent a considerable amount of time going through conditions. We went back and forth about some things that staff felt very, um, strongly about, about putting conditions on there. The applicant was very, um, very, um, willing to work with us and agreed to, uh, almost all those conditions that we put out there, but I'm gonna go over those conditions here in just a minute, just to let you know what they are. This was the site plan that was included with the packet, so this is the one-hundred-and-ninety-five lots. What you're looking at right here is, again, this is Maxwell Road, this is Hummingbird Road. The primary entrance, as it stands right now, is right here. There's a line that cuts through the middle of this, it'll be in two phases, and the reasons why we did two phases was a couple of reasons. One is this road was extremely long, and we have some regulations about road length that we had to phase it in if they were going to build it to this scale. Secondly, is that we had concerns about the two ways in and out. So as it's currently conditioned right now, is that they would be allowed to build this, but there's a condition that they could not build phase two until they were able to be able to get a second way in and out of the property. Um, I know there's been some talks and negotiation with the applicants, with the property owners, I'll let the owner and the applicant talk about that when he comes up here, but that was a condition that staff felt pretty strongly about, that you ought to have with this many lots, have a second way to get in and out, and I know our Fire Marshal's office would certainly appreciate that as well. So, some of the conditions that we had talked and, and were agreed upon by the developer was, again, phase two of one-hundred-and-thirty-one lots here would only be, uh, approved if they can get a second way in and out. They, uh, we did work with them to provide stubs here at these locations that you can see for future growth. There's a stub here, stub here, stub here that comes out to Maxwell. So in case this phase here came in for some sort of residential, that we had to make sure that there was a way this road could be extended for a possible third way out if you had more homes that were coming through. Uh, there's a condition that central water and sewer are required, but that's a subdivision ordinance requirement, I was talking about that before, so there is going to be water and sewer provided to this subdivision. Uh, there was a condition, since it is RR, and that allows mobile homes, the applicant has agreed to put a condition on the property to only, uh, allow stick-built homes for the property. Uh, there's, toward, it says a forty-foot wide buffer along Hummingbird and Maxwell, and I'm gonna go back just a little bit, I'm not going to try to confuse you too much, but if you look at these little strips along here with the homes that touch on Hummingbird and Maxwell, the applicant has agreed to put a forty-foot buffer between those homes and the road to account for some natural vegetation, or something that could be put there to be able to screen off the homes or the backs of the homes from those roads. So, another condition is that for the roads that do touch on Maxwell and Hummingbird, all of the lots would be accessed by their driveways internal to the subdivision. So there would be no driveways that would be cut out onto Maxwell or Hummingbird, so there would be no driveways that DOT would have to approve as a part of going out onto their road. All of the roads would be internal to the actual subdivision itself. And of course, it's two phases, so we are mandating that there would be a condition that there's one homeowners association for both phases, and the applicant has agreed to that as well. So, when we looked at the proposed profile for this particular development-
Can I ask one question, though?
Yes, sir.
Is there no green space in here? I mean, there's, I mean, if you got that many homes in there, where the kids gonna play? I mean, you got Maxwell Road, and you got Hummingbird, I mean, there's, I mean-
We do have-
Maybe I'll wait for the applicant to say, but-
Right.
I believe in, in some green space now, I got to have some kind of, go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah.
I just asked.
I'll let the applicant speak to that, but we did have some allowances for some green space that was there. Um, so phase one, as it was submitted, was sixty-four lots, when, so the conditional zoning had a minimum lot size of fifteen thousand square feet. Of course, RR has a minimum of twenty thousand, that's an average, so, um, that's the minimum that was proposed. There's some lots that are over twenty thousand square feet, and I think the applicant has made some tweaks to his plans. I'll let him talk to you guys about that.
This is the original.
That's the original application, yes, sir. So, um, yes, so I know the applicant has made some few modifications, but I didn't feel comfortable speaking on behalf of him, I'd rather him come up and be able to speak on that to the board. So, uh, as it was submitted, they kept the setbacks except for the sides. It's my understanding, I think that's now been changed. Um, and the lot yield underneath, th- this particular plan would have been one-hundred-and-ninety-five units. If it was a straight RR going by zero lot line, they would be entitled to two-hundred-and-thirty-two, two-hundred-and-thirty-three units is what our count was. So this is standing on Hummingbird Road, looking at the site. As I said, that's the zoning sign per the state statute advertising requirements. There is a home on the property, as I mentioned before, that's the only home that's on this, uh, sort of, um, assemblage of properties that you see out there. This is trying to get back into the property the best that staff could. I mean, there's some small roads and driveways, but this, I think, was the extent that we were able to get back in there. Uh, this is the south view along Hummingbird Road, or Place, as you can see here. Um, this is standing on the site, looking across the street, you have a couple of manufactured homes. This is the north view, heading north along Hummingbird. Again, this is on the property, this is, uh, it's a pretty big piece of property for the home, but this is a barn shelter that's kind of tucked back in the woods on the, on the property of the home, of the house. So staff had recommended approval of the request. When it went to the planning board at the last meeting, it was, uh, they had recommended approval by five to four vote, so-
Was this, again, this was the original?
That was the original, yes, sir.
Okay, the, the planning board voted on the original?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, uh-huh. So, uh, and I was just going to add, since then, uh, the applicant has, uh, I know, been working with staff, he had some amended plans, again, I'll let him speak to that because it's his project, uh, but I can tell you that we have looked at the plans, and we didn't have an issue as far as what he wanted to propose. So if there was a consideration of this, just know that staff has reviewed that plan, so.
Okay.
Alright.
Very long-winded, I'm sorry, so if you have any questions, I'll try to answer what I can. So-
Yes, sir, Commissioner Evans?
You know, you know, I tell you, I, I'm real pleased at the fact that you said staff looked at it, at the modifications that were made, because I was wondering, and I'm sure others were wondering, why would you not speak on it? Maybe nobody, or people in our listening audience, they may have wondered why you were not speaking on it, but you stated that staff has looked at it and was okay with the-
Yes.
Modifications that were made.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
With that, I'll open the public hearing for, uh, zoning case twenty-two forty-three. Do we have any speakers, Madam, uh, Clerk?
We have two speakers in favor, two in opposition. Our first speaker in favor is Mr. George Rose.
Okay. And I know y'all signed up as you came in, so is that the way you want to go? Okay, that's fine, alright. Same thing with the opponents, as they can figure that out.
George Rose, 1206 Longleaf Drive here in Fayetteville. I'm the site engineer for the developer. As Rawls has said, the plan he has presented tonight, just to make sure there's no confusion, that is the old plan that we initially developed, and we went through planning, staff approval, and got planning board approval. And based on comments and concerns from the residents and comments from the planning staff and others, we went back and made changes, and I think we've followed every one of their recommendations, as Rawls has said. Just, let me just hit the highlights of the new plan, and I do have-
You better hit more than the highlights now, so we can hear.
Okay, I do have small copies of it. If, if you think that would be helpful, I think David said he would help pass those out.
We're gonna stop this time, 'cause it's not fair for him. He's starting to be running as we are passing out.
All right, again, well, that-
Hold on a minute, Mr. Rose.
All right.
Madam manager, if you come here a minute, just, 'cause there are some people who are in opposition, they ought to at least be able to see what you're talking about. So, you can keep one. If, who do we have speaking in opposition, Madam Clerk? So, I'll raise your hand, so that a couple of them could at least see what you're talking about, 'cause that's who is affected by this. Yeah, he's worried about that little piece of property. So, you better talk about his little piece, too, while you're, while you're talking.
Okay.
Now, we ready.
Okay. All right, well, again, based on comments, we adjusted the plan, and I think we've addressed most of the major, if not all, the major concerns that were presented before. I think one of the concerns was the minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. We've gone to 20,000 square feet. We're requesting a R20 zoning as opposed to the RR zoning. One of the concerns was zero lot line, where we were only requesting a reduction in the side setback from 15 to five feet. Well, now, we've, we've given up the zero lot line condition, and so we're just requesting the standard R20 setbacks of 15 feet on the sides, 30 in the front, 35 in the rear. By increasing the minimum lot sizes, we've gone from 195 lots in the original plan to 168 lots in this plan. Minimum lot width is still 85 feet, but again, that side setback is the normal R20 setback. We do support that no manufactured housing, manufactured housing would be allowed as a condition of the approval. There was concern about that second access that Rawls mentioned. Since that time, the developer has acquired a parcel out onto Maxwell Road, so we do now have a secure property that we can go out to Maxwell Road for our second access. The lot sizes are on that map. If you can see them, there, many of them are much larger than 20,000, but again, the minimum is 20,000. What we'd like is for you to approve this plan. The staff is, as we said, we've worked with them closely. They've accepted all the changes we've made, and hopefully, we've addressed most of the concerns of the neighborhood. The developer's legal representative is here, Scott, and I'm gonna let him speak to, but I'll be glad to answer any questions, if you have any right now.
Well, I guess, just the question I'd ask, and I think the gentleman had a legitimate question, is whether there could possibly be a fence up and down wherever he's got that, that pond or whatever. I think some people shaking their heads back there in the back.
I mean, I think the developer would be willing to protect that, their development from his if that presents a danger to the public. I haven't seen it, I'm not really aware of, you know, the condition on the ground there.
And again, I asked, there's no green space in here?
No, there is. In the original plan, there were several large green space areas. We basically preserved those same areas. In this plan, there's four areas noted on this plan. They say OS1, OS2.
OS1. Kinda give me a-
Okay, the variety of the front entrance there on Hummingbird Road is OS1. And then sort of in the middle of the track, OS2, right on the Phase One, Phase Two boundary line is OS2.
Yes.
I am not following.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Can you, go back to the, to the, to the old plan, 'cause at least you can, 'cause if they're in the old plan-
This is the new plan.
This is the new plan.
At least I can have a bearing.
Yeah.
Yes, I can have a bearing.
That's the one.
All right.
Yeah, so, and, I'm not sure I'm-
That's what I thought.
This is, this is Hummingbird Place, and that's the main entrance off Hummingbird Place. So, this is what we call Open Space Area One, right there. At the entrance would be signage and landscaping, that buffer that Rawls talked about.
But you can't play on that. That's just, that's just-
Well, you wouldn't probably on that one, but here's a very large one, 77,000 square feet, Open Space Two, right on the Phase One, Phase Two line. That would be for a park or walking trails or that sort of thing. Here's another large one, 113,000 square feet. There's a potential stormwater basin. We haven't gotten that far in the design yet, but a large open space there for, again, park, walking trails everywhere. Another one over here, potential for a stormwater basin in conjunction with some additional open space. And then in addition to those, there are other lots where we have potential stormwater basins, very flat site, but generally draining from this direction to that direction. So, the basins are positioned like we think they'll end up being on, on that sort of northwest side there.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Not comfortable. This is the new plan.
In our hand, yes.
This is the new plan, based on the comments we got from the residents, the comments we got from the planning staff and, and others, that we addressed what we felt like were all of the major concerns, lot sizes, setbacks, access to Maxwell Road, those sorts of things.
Let me ask the planning director, what do we have to vote on? He can say he's gonna do anything, but I don't feel comfortable voting on anything like that.
Well, I mean, the, the thing about it is, we can put conditions on it. This board can put the, what he's saying.
It's a conditional request, so you can tie that plan to this request, and he has to build exactly what he submitted to you as a part of that. And he's actually offering that up to you to say that he would like to enter that as, as his exhibit in site plan for your approval. So, if you were to approve it, it would have to be a motion that would say with the new site plan that he has submitted, and that's really it, and he would be held to that.
Okay, well, somebody's got to-
Yeah.
-say that for me, 'cause I've been burned in these years, okay? But people saying one thing, don't mean to blame you for that, but I've got to be definite.
Understand.
Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe I heard correctly that the first plan that was done, it was discussion with the residents of that particular community about what needs to be done. It was presented to them, am I correct?
Yes, we had, we had a community meeting in Stedman. We're invited all of the residents. We sent out the same mailing list that the planning staff sent out for the initial rezoning public hearing. And so, I think we had 20 or 25 folks from the community come out to that meeting. We presented the original plan, not this plan, we presented that original plan, got their concerns about lot sizes, about access, all the things we've talked about. And so, that plan was then submitted to the planning board. Many of those same people came to speak at that meeting, and the planning board voted to approve that plan. Based on comments we got subsequent to that meeting, we felt like we should make and would make changes to that original plan that would hopefully satisfy all the major concerns of all the parties involved. That's when we increased the lot sizes. We took away the zero lot line, all the things we've talked about. So, yes, we would like this plan to be entered in, and this plan to be the one you would approve tonight.
Okay, excuse me. I need some, so, this particular plan that you're presenting to us tonight has not been introduced to the citizens that are involved in this, that had the questions at first.
I'm not sure if this plan went out to the public or not. David, did this plan go to the, okay? This plan has not gone out to the public, no.
Okay, well, what concerns me about that is that if you initially went to the public to get their thoughts on it and present the plan to them, why didn't you do it this time? Because I'm sure that they would like to know exactly what changes was made before you presented it to us. And staff, you're the only ones that saw it. The planning board didn't see it, did it? They did not. So, we're going on your word that it's okay. But I think it's only fair that if you did go to your, now, I'm only one vote, but I'm just saying, I think it's only fair if you went to get the, to try to get consensus from the citizens at first, and you found out that there was an issue with them pertaining to that plan, that you should've gone back again. And that's just my thoughts.
Commissioner Key.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Rose, I have a couple questions. First of all, I appreciate that you did meet with the citizens, and I do, I can see very much where this plan is even more restrictive to that setting than the original plan. When you originally came up, you had talked about asking for an R20. And, and I'll tell you that that's what I was, the setbacks bothered me, but now that coming into R20 setback, are we still asking for R20? Are we going back to RR conditional zoning? Are you, do we want R20 conditional zoning? Because as, as Commissioner Counsel had mentioned, we, we don't want zero lot lines, and what I hear from you is you don't want zero lot lines. But if we approve today without conditions, a builder could put zero lot lines, an R20, if, if we don't have the conditions on there. Are you and the developers okay with current R20 setback rules and regulations?
Yes, that's what this plan shows. Our data sheet on this plan shows the setbacks for standard R20, no zero lot line. We are not requesting zero lot line for this development.
Okay, I have another question, if I could, Mr. Chair. There's a part of this that I appreciate the, I know getting water and sewer out there is not gonna be cheap. And it is, you know, it, this is, this seems to be a bit of a partnership with, I don't know how, what your relationship with PWC is, but as a board, you know, we don't, we don't want septic tanks anymore, and, and, and public water is a big deal out here. And I, I have no idea on the finances, on what that does to the cost of a house, but I'm sure that it, it's expensive. And so, you know, water and sewer is always a big issue for me. I appreciate this plan being much more restrictive, and I am willing to support with conditions that we had set out. Thank you.
Also, just wanna point out one thing. So, just to be clear, the application is for RR conditional. So, if you went to R20 conditional, that'd have to be part of your motion. Just wanted to make sure that we're clear on that.
But you had mentioned, Mr. Rose, you had mentioned R20. Do you have a preference, one or the other?
Yeah, well, I think what we are asking is for R20.
Your application says RR.
Well, that's, that's the application for this plan, right? That, that's the application for the old plan. We're submitting tonight the new plan.
Is R20 more restrictive than RR?
I would say so, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I'm good, thanks.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
It would be R20 conditional.
You're right.
R20 conditional is acceptable to us.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Rose.
Who's our next speaker?
Our second speaker is-
I guess he already did, huh? Mr. Flowers.
Mr. Scott Flowers.
Good evening, folks. As Madam Clerk said, my name is Scott Flowers. I'm a lawyer with the Hutchins Law Firm. My address is 4317 Ramsey Street, Fayetteville, North Carolina. It's good to see all of you again. I wanna make something clear about this new plan, so there's no confusion about it, okay? The only difference between the new plan and the original plan is that the new plan is less dense. It has less homes. People come to these hearings, and they complain about the density. They complain about having so many homes on a site. So, what the developer has done is it has given up 30 lots to make this development less dense. It has made the development less dense by making the lot sizes larger. It has added a second entrance. So, we now have a second entrance. You recall, staff said originally there was not a second entrance. Now, there is a second entrance. So, the proposed second entrance is now a reality. The lot sizes are larger, and we've done away with the no setbacks on the side lots, okay? So, now, we've gone from five-foot setbacks on the interior sides to 15-foot. So, it's like, if you were, you know, if you went in a room and said, "We're gonna have five colors, let's everybody pick a color," and there was somebody there that didn't want, that wanted orange, and their orange color didn't get into the group, and then we added orange, there's no reason to go back. The only thing we've done is made it better. The only thing we've done is addressed these concerns that people had about density and lack of a second access and zero lot lines. So, it's not like we started out with 195 lots, and now we're trying to get 220. We started out with 195 lots, and now we're asking for 168. We would not come to you with a more restrictive plan, I mean, a less restrictive plan than was previously approved. We have come to you with a more restrictive plan that was previously approved. Yes, Ms. Counsel, I think you have a-
I need to tell the chairman now. I'm not comfortable with that. And you tell me, you're kinda alluding to the fact that I'm stupid because I don't approve it.
Not at all.
I've got to see it right here in black and white. So, my vote is going to be no until we see it.
Well, then, may I suggest to you, and, and I'm not trying to allude that you're stupid at all, I'm just trying to make a clarification, Madam.
I understand what you are saying, what they will do, what they've changed it to, but I'm not comfortable with coming up with a motion. I'm not comfortable. There are one, two, three, four more.
I wanna make you comfortable. So, let me make a suggestion.
You can, baby.
Can I make a suggestion? If you're not comfortable, then send it back to the planning board to review the new plan.
That's exactly my motion.
Okay, see, I am making you comfortable. You said I couldn't. I proved you wrong.
Bless your heart, where you can close your mouth.
So, if you're not comfortable, send it back to the planning board.
Well-
Needs to go back to the planning board, because it was five-four.
Right.
I'm sorry, but I've got to be comfortable.
Well, we want you to be comfortable.
Don't talk anymore, Mr.-
No. You're gonna make it worse, baby.
Okay.
All right, give me a moment.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna work through this thing. So, though, I got you, Commissioner Counsel, but I do, as with anything else, those in opposition, if I could, who's the, who's the first speaker?
Our first speaker of the two is Donna Wilson.
Ms. Wilson.
Mr. Chair, for the record, those, the proponents were both limited to three minutes, so these should also be limited to three minutes each.
Pull that down just a little bit.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Donna Wilson. I live at 5117 Maxwell Road. This is new information to me. My driveway is next to the second exit that they just purchased, supposedly. It was not for sale. I know who owns the land. We have gotten phone calls like crazy to sell. I have three acres. I am a new Stedman resident. We've only been here seven years. I came from Virginia to buy some green space. Since I got here, our septic has failed. I have one of the few only residential above-ground septics in my backyard. $17,000 I had to pay in order to flush a toilet. Not one year after that, five houses were built in front of me. They since have had problems with water and septic problems. They were approved for in-ground septic, knowing that I just put an above-ground septic behind my manufactured home, yes. It is 108 feet long, three and a half feet high, behind my house. And now, my driveway is right next to a road, supposedly.[1767.84] I can't get out of my driveway now because the five houses they built in front of me, and the speed limit is 55 miles an hour. My driveway is over 400 feet long. So they cannot see me from the road because these houses that they built, another builder built in front of me. So I have a problem getting out of my driveway as it is. DOT told me I have the right of way. At first, they told me I can't have a driveway on Maxwell Road because you cannot have a drive, there's no, there's no more spaces for driveways. I told them I own this land. I am making a driveway. This is during COVID. I waited almost three months. I was exiting out of the grass and out of somebody else's yard to get out of my driveway because they would not give me a pipe for a covert because I have a ditch. The water comes over my driveway into my yard and even behind my house, which is where Mr. Bullock's drainage, his, his pond is, there is water. All in these woods, there is water. The land holds water. Now, they say DOT will tell them, once they get all the trees knocked down, which absorbs the water mostly. So I'm saying they're gonna knock down all these trees behind me, and it is on two sides of my house. Now, the front of my house is already five houses.
I'll let you finish that. Go ahead.
So now we have two more sides of my house. The trees are gonna be gone. They're gonna flood me right out.
Thank you.
And who do I call?
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our final speaker in opposition is Robin Bridges.
Good evening. I can move it up a little bit higher.
Yeah, you gotta move it up a little bit.
Robin Bridges, 2886 Wade Stedman Road. I oppose this application. I want to talk a little bit about the community meeting, which I did attend. The letter that the builders sent out was only received two days prior. The community was, I would say, not well represented there, and most of the presentation was by an attorney. That's one reason you see me here. Many residents of this area don't feel comfortable talking to such a forum, and I've been asked to speak against this. I oppose it. I don't live adjacent to it, but I drive through this intersection frequently. The North Carolina Wildlife Office has this 106 acres slated for the NC Atlas Program. If we destroy these trees, we're gonna destroy the wildlife that they want to examine here on that land. This land, Mr. Howard didn't present it very clearly, is on 90% hydroic soils. Down in this corner here, next to these modular or A1A homes, that is a 24.6 acre retention pond due to the water issues in this area. So the water is coming this way, not the way Mr. Rose said. And the county felt like it had to put 24.6 acres, 25% of this, in a retention pond because of the issues there. 90% hydroic soils. Mr. Stout Construction figured very prominently in the presentation to the Joint Planning Board. He's not here tonight. I think that's because I brought up the fact that he has 22 DEQ stormwater violations. You guys received a copy of that in an email to you. I have copies here. They're from April through present time of this year, and there are still multiple things outstanding. These stormwater violations and the water issues here, the hydroic soils, can endanger current residents and provide substandard housing to new residents. I also wanted to say that I was, last week, at the planning board, and I inquired of, his name is Christopher, if there had been any updates to the information that was submitted by Mr. Rose at all. And I was told no. Not only do I have these DEQ violations, but I have what they gave me with the, the current application that still shows the five-foot setbacks on the sides, the zero lot line application. And then I have a school capacity enrollment chart that shows that we're over capacity at Cape Fear. So these are some documents you can look at, and I would yield any time for Mr. Bullock, if there is any, because I don't know if he's signed up to the wrong place.
You can give those to the.
There's two copies of each thing.
Okay, she'll make additional copies. Are there any other speakers?
Did you sign up at the wrong place? There are no more speakers.
Okay, so there are no, no more speakers. Thank you. And I do have, and I think I'm hearing concerns from other commissioners, and we don't have two here, and I think Commissioner Evans and Commissioner Counsel, and I don't know if he nods his head too. I, I would tell you that one of the things is on here, who was that I was talking to? Mr. Rose. Because I think Commissioner Keith asked that, because it does say proposed zoning, RR conditional zoning, but you want R-20. That's what it says down at the bottom of the map. So. And I heard, where the attorney, there's the attorney right there, that with that, and, and I asked to pass it out to the proponents, I mean, the opponents, because I think it's only fair that they actually get to see what it is that you're proposing and have an opportunity to talk with whoever. And I think I see Mr. Crumpler back there. We do have that process of the planning board and all of that. So, and I know every time, if, if it's denied, you're out, but if it gets delayed, it does cost. But I think that in fairness to everyone, even to the proponents and the opponents, and to the planning board and the staff, that we maybe send this back and bring it back in November. That gives everybody an opportunity for you all to meet with them, like you met with them before, have those conversations. And I think it gives the commissioners a little bit of comfort to know that that at least happened, that we're all talking about the same thing on the same page. It would have been great to have gotten that ahead of time. So if there's a motion, and I think Mr. Flowers said that they were not opposed to that, to send it back to the planning board. They already approved the old one, so I don't see they have a problem with this. Send it back to the planning board and then bring it back through the process. Is there a motion for that?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Yes. It's been moved to second. That, and I think that's in line with.
I have a comment, though, too.
Okay. Commissioner Evans.
You know, I, I, I'm just a little concerned about this, and Commissioner Counsel, I appreciate you and what you, what you said and everything. But the concern that I have about it is, is that we have to send it back to the board, which I'm all for. But this could have been settled if there was more conversation done. We wouldn't have to be dealing with this again. And, and it's, it's just, it's just wild to me that we can't settle this tonight because of lack of communication between all parties involved.
Yeah, and, and it's, it's, even as they had these conversations, and I heard the young lady talk about the septic tape. If you run this warden sewer up there from PWC, now it's gonna cost to tap on. But it may solve some of the issues out there that all of them have with the septic tanks. If you able, according to where that, that trunk line runs, it, everybody may be able to tap on to it and would stop some of that. Mr. Keith, Commissioner Keith.
Thank you, and I, I appreciate, you know, Mr. Commissioner Evans, I, I agree with you. We have all the information to do this tonight, and, and I, it passed the planning board, although it was a five-four, but it passed. And now they've come up with something much more restrictive, even benefiting at a higher level, plus bringing water and sewer into an area, increasing the setbacks. It's everything that we've wanted and asked the developer to do, to, to go out and meet and talk to, talk to the residents around there. But this is a significant investment in, in an area. We always talk about housing and affordable housing, and there's not enough housing. But then we sit here and then we, and this is not the first time that we've sent things back to the planning board, further delaying things. We have the information tonight. We're elected to make the decisions, of course, and do the best decisions we can with, with the information that we have. Well, the information we have is, it's approved by the staff. It's approved by the planning board, albeit not, not unanimous, but still approved. The developer has come back with further restrictions, investing in water and sewer into an area that needs this water and sewer. And, and quite frankly, as, as the chairman just said, it can benefit a lot of people on that road, on the water and sewer, if, if they could, if they possibly could tie on to that. They, they put in additional driveways. They, they've done everything that we've asked them to do. And, and quite frankly, went over and above, and asking for R-20 above RR with, and, and agreeing to the conditions is even more restrictive than the original ask. So, you know, Commissioner Evans, respect where you are, but I'd like to make the decision tonight, too, but, you know, it's, it's a pleasure of the board.
All right, so the motion is a motion and a second.
Pardon me, Mr. Chairman. May I confirm the second to the motion?
Commissioner Evans.
Thank you.
He was ready to hand, but he was second. It's been moved to second to send it back to the planning board. All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Counsel, Chairman Adams, Commissioner Evans voting in opposition. Commissioners Lancaster and Commissioner Keith, motion passed.
All right. So that will go back to the planning board and come back in November. And, you know, one of the things I think is, and I thank everybody coming up being civil on this. It is, I don't know if this is the second time, how many times it's been up here?
We're going for three.
Going for three. But to be able to, to hopefully work with those residents out there, and the residents work with them, to be able to do that and see exactly what happens. It's just a matter of, of being able to.
Communicate.
Yeah, because I was having a difficult time. Thanks for the green space, though. I do like the green space if that, if it does pass. But thank you all. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I am very sorry. Haven't worked in, in and around real estate for more than 40 years, but I gotta be safe. I'm so sorry. I know it's expensive, but.
Well, I, I guess they'd rather send it back than have a no, Madam. That's what I would tell them. I think they understand that part. All right. Yes.
Well, I guess I need to make my apologies, too. I apologize to the citizens for not being informed of what had been done and so that we could have gone and got it done.
All right. That takes us to zoning case 2262.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. As you can see by the map that's highlighted here above, this is out towards the, in the Cedar Creek area of the, of the county, you can see, south central or southeast. The applicant owner is Ms. Doris Spell. The request is to go from A1 to RR rural residential. The intent, as you can see by the little small lot here, the applicant already has a, basically a half-acre lot. The indication that we've gotten from staff is that, is that the owner was seeking a zoning that was more in conformance for the setbacks to allow her to be able to pull a building permit for expansions on her house. Right now, with A1, those setbacks are designed for two-acre lots, so they're much more wide and expansive as compared to a half-acre requirement. So, as I said before, there's a single-family home sitting on the property, which you'll see evidenced by the photographs I'll show you here shortly, surrounded by two, two mobile homes on either side. There's a church out there here, Cedar Creek Road, and you can see McKinnon Road sort of at the intersection, so it sits pretty much close to that intersection where you see the two streets. So here's the zoning map. You can see the color differentiations, but you can see that it's currently zoned A1, which, as you know, A1 is a two-acre minimum lot size. There's RR scattered all throughout the area, so the precedent for RR in the area is certainly there. So, yeah, moving forward. So there are some hydroic soils on the property, but there's no water and sewer. So this plan's a little interesting in so much as that they don't really offer designated districts. They do say there's one acre without water and a half acre with public water. So, but there's a number of different types of recommendation in the Southeast Land Use Plan. The staff thought that there was enough there to be able to recommend it. The lot's already, you know, an existing lot of records, so whether or not they're A1 or they're RR, they couldn't subdivide the lot any further than what they have already. So we felt that, given that and the fact that a lot of the, a lot of the goals and objectives that you see highlighted include to provide for certain types of residential development, to maintain the rural residential character of the area, we thought it was planned consistent. This is the home itself. You can see, this is standing just across the road, looking at the subject property, an existing stick-built home. This is in the north view on McKinnon Road. You can see the house would be immediately on the left-hand side. This is standing on the property itself, looking across the street. There's another stick-built home right across the street. And in the south view, you can see with the property immediately on the right-hand side. You can see, of course, the sign that we have put out here in accordance with state statute advertising requirements. So staff had recommended approval of the request. When this went to the planning board, it also see, it also received a unanimous seven to zero vote. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer what I can.
Anybody have any questions? All right, if not, I'll open the public hearing. Are there any speakers, Madam Clerk?
There are no speakers.
Then I will close the public hearing, and I will take a motion.
I move that we approve the resounding request from A1 Agricultural District to R40 Residential District and find the request is consistent with the Southeast Cumberland Land Use Plan. The request is reasonable and in the public interest, as is compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding land use activities and zoning. If I can get a motion.
That's my motion.
If I can get a second.
Say it.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right, thank you. That takes us to zoning case 2265.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. You can see, this case, 0065, is in the Bethany area of the county. You can see with the highlighted star. So the applicant owner is Mr. Daniel Antonio Jose. The request, much like the case we just heard, is to go from A1 agricultural to R40 residential. The intent is that the owner is wanting to take off a mobile home that is there and replace and build a stick-built home on the property for pretty much an acre. So, again, similar to the previous request, in order to pull the building permits, the current lot is held to an A1 standard for setbacks. So if approved, it would bring the setbacks down to allow the owner to be able to build on, on his property, to put a garage and so forth, and other types of buildings associated with that type district. So this isn't existing lot of record, so again, if it was A1 or R40, they can't subdivide it less than what they already have out there. So staff took that into consideration when we made our recommendation on it, right? So again, there's, there's, is a manufactured home on the property right now. There's some, two stick-built homes heading out toward the corner of Collier Road. This is on River School Road, as you can see here. Sorry, I forgot to mention where it was located, but these are the two roads that sit at this intersection. Pretty much A1 in the area. This is one of the smaller lots that are out here, again, an acre, but you can see for the most part, it's pretty much A1 agricultural. There is water out here, but there is no sewer, and there's no evidence of hydroic soils on the property, at least by our analysis through the staff report. So when we looked at the Bethany plan, it calls for rural. So it says A1 or A1A are acceptable. When staff had looked at the request, it does say R40 and R40A would be acceptable districts if they are held to higher standards. Staff had felt that since it's going from an A1 to an R40 standard, which does not allow manufactured homes, that the fact that they would be able to build only a stick-built home on the property is a higher development standard than what would otherwise be allowed in an A1 area all out there. So staff had, had made the determination that the request, in our opinion, was consistent with the land use plan. So again, this is standing across the street. This is looking at the subject property. As you can see, we did include the sign for advertisement. I'll always say that. Want to make sure I'm clear on that. But this is the home that's currently out there now. The owner does use it for some minor home occupation-type businesses dealing with landscaping and so forth. This is the south view on South River School Road with the property immediately on the left-hand side. This is the west view. And this is the north view. So pretty much, pretty much a rural area. So staff had recommended approval of the request. When this went to the planning board, they also had approved the request by a vote of four to three.
Mr. Keith, did you, Commissioner, do you have the title?
So clarification. In, in A1, one house per every two acres?
Correct.
This is a one-acre lot?
Correct.
If something happened to that house, they could not rebuild it?
Correct.
All right. So alls you're asking to do is to move it from A1 to R40 so it can be in compliance with the existing.
Lot size.
Lot size that's already out there.
So they can pull a.
Mr. Keith, did you, Commissioner, do you have the title?
So, clarification. In, in A1, one house per every two acres?
Correct.
This is a one acre lot?
Correct.
If something happened to that house, they could not rebuild it?
Correct.
All right. So, alls you're asking to do is to move it from A1 to RR so it can be in compliance with the existing?
The lot size.
Lot size that's already out there.
So, they can pull a building permit. Yes, sir.
Right. And they're not going to be putting on any additional buildings, just basically cleaning up what they have right now so they can put one house on there?
Yeah. The owner indicated they're going to pull off the manufactured home and build a stick-built home on the property.
Okay. And, and if we were to say no, and they pulled off that, that manufactured home, that owner could therefore never do anything with that property again as far as building?
It would create some issues going through the building permit process, certainly. Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. I will open the public hearing. Are there any speakers, Madam Clerk?
We have no speakers in favor, one speaker in opposition. Our speaker in opposition is Robin Bridges.
All right. Ms. Bridges.
Once again, Robin Bridges, 2886 Wade Stedman Road, and I am here on behalf of the Bethany Rural Action Group. This was a split vote at the planning board, typically surrounded by A1, would not be in harmony with the rural nature of the land. However, we do recognize that gentleman, apparently, I don't think he's here today and he wasn't at the planning board meeting. Okay, great. That he didn't want to speak on his behalf. Anyway, I have pictures from Google Maps of an aerial view and from a side view. I also have pictures of the current structure that's on the property. Mr. Daniel has at the rear setback, which you can see from these pictures, a building with a concrete foundation. It's right on the lot line. It has an air conditioning unit. It has a metal roof nicer than mine, and it looks to be, it has nice little scalloped edges on the, the edge of the home, and looks to be that he's already built his second home, and he built it right on the lot line. I don't know if he was, he wasn't at the planning board meeting, so I don't know what, what his, his position will be. But if you look at these pictures, the aerial view, the street view, the structure is a very solid brick, concrete block foundation, and the older house, which appears in good shape, remains. We can't have two permanent foundation even on a RR lot. So, I believe that somebody needs to help Mr. Daniel understand this and get the proper building permits and approvals in place. So, that's why I'm saying denial. I'm not trying to deny a man to rebuild a current home.
Thank you. All right.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I failed to mention that the owner of the property is here. He was not at the planning board meeting, but I think he has very limited speaking, English-speaking capabilities, so I think he might have some...
No, he didn't sign up, Mr. Wall.
Understood. I just wanted to make sure that he's there. Yes, sir.
I will close the public hearing, but Mr. Keith, you have some questions?
Um, yeah. Sorry. Okay. Is, there's already a building being built right now. So, he's trying to pull permits on a building that's already built?
I believe so. I haven't looked at his permit history record.
Okay. But is that in fact on the lot? I mean, RR requires a setback.
Mm-hmm. So, that's something that we would handle during the permitting process. If there are any noted violations, we would handle that at that particular point.
You going to tear it down?
Not necessarily. We'd probably have to go to the Board of Adjustment to be able to seek relief from our standards, if that's the case.
I, I don't, my, my, I don't want to deny, first of all, it's improperly zoned if it's a, if it's A1, and I don't want to deny anybody their ability to do that, but there seems to be possibly some miscommunication on what he could build or what he couldn't build with setbacks. And, you know, by the pictures that Ms. Bridges sent, it's obviously that this is not a, a small endeavor and is, and is far, far along the process. I, again, I, I think we're dealing with a situation where he had a place, he wants to improve his place, and the existing zoning would not allow him to do that. So, I think we're just fixing a wrong from before, but I do have a little concern about how it had already progressed in this far.
Yes, sir.
Did you tell him to stop, I guess, with what he was building? If, if he's in violation? I guess that's my question.
We hadn't noticed any kind of violation one way or the other. Again, I'd have to get with the building inspectors to go out there and say what type of violation, if there's one, that existed.
But we don't know if that's on the property line then?
Again, right.
Okay.
We would look at that if there's a complaint or if they come through the building permit process, but again, we haven't pulled any building permits.
Well, I think I heard the complaint, but anyway.
Right.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. From listening to the young lady speak, she was saying that she, she believed he didn't understand what needs to be done. Is the problem, is the problem, is the problem correctable?
I think so.
It's correctable?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any way that anybody from staff can assist him in understanding what needs to be done and how it needs to be done?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
We'll make your motions in the back.
Okay. Mr. J-
Wait a minute. Let me close the public hearing if I didn't do that. Okay.
And Mr. Chair, I, I would like to make a motion that we send this back.
Give me a second.
I mean, okay, I, I know we're laughing, we're sending things back, but one thing that we are responsible for doing is helping our citizens. We, we don't want, we, we want to be there for them, either way, either way. So, yeah, I stay with my motion to send it back to the planning board.
Commissioner Keith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Commissioner Evans, I, I understand that, but I don't know if there's any new information that can come out on this. It, it is, it's a unique piece of property. We have gotten a commitment from our, our planning department that we're going to work with them to correct anything that may have happened since this time. But, my, my, my issue is that I have, I have an, I have a problem with not allowing someone to improve the land that they have just because it was incorrectly zoned. So, that being said, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, we got a motion on the floor.
Oh, okay. I, I thought it died for lack of a second.
All right. It died for a lack of a second. So, but let me ask, I, I guess I ask this question before you make your motion, because the problem I have is, you stood up there and tell me that he was going to take off the manufactured house and then put this house up there, which is not quite right, because evidently the manufactured house is still there, and he's already building this other house. Am I wrong? I mean, am I missing something?
There's a man-
Where he lives while he's building.
Was it that it we saw?
The indication that we got from the applicant is they're going to remove the mobile home. I don't know about any other structures. They're going to remove their mobile home and put a secondary home on the property.
Right. That's what I thought. But I guess it's what he's doing, huh? But he hadn't removed the, the first structure yet.
I can't speak for the applicant. I mean, again, he's-
Well, I mean, you hadn't took the pictures. I mean-
Right.
Did you see two structures out there or not?
Yeah, there's structures that are on the property.
Okay, then, I mean, let's not play this. I mean, there's two structures on the property.
Sure.
Now, that's, I mean, we're going to be straight on that part. There's two structures out there. So, don't say you don't know, because it's out there, and he hadn't moved the manufactured home, and the other one's there. Because I don't see the picture of the other one. What, what I don't understand is why they didn't get the picture with the two out there, if it's out there. I mean, she did that, but not staff. I mean, but staff went out and gave me this picture of this home in the front. Clearly, the other one must have been right behind that. So, why we didn't get a picture of the one behind that?
I don't think going on their property, I guess. We just tried to be able to stand from the road and get various angles of what you're looking at it from the street.
Mr. Keith?
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Chair. I don't know where this is going to go, but I'm going to make a, a motion on case number 22-0065. I move to approve the rezoning from A1 Agricultural District to RR Residential District and find the request to be consistent with the Bethany Land Use Plan, which calls for rural at this location. This request is reasonable and in the public interest as it is compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding land use activities and zoning.
Is there a second? Say it. Okay. Commissioner Evans?
I, I do have a problem with this, because what we, what we hear, and we don't know if it's true or not, but what we hear is that this person does not clearly understand what needs to be done in order to have this home built or rebuilt or something of that nature. Now, I have a problem with changing the zoning or doing whatever we have to do for it to get to what we're trying to get without this person not being a part of this.
I mean, he had the opportunity to speak, and I understand what you said, but he had the opportunity to speak. He made the application for this, so, I mean, he had to have, he got through that part. I mean, I don't understand what it is that you want us to do. If you got an opportunity to speak, you hear you didn't sign up, then, you know, that's, that's just, you know.
I want us to be fair about it. That's what I want.
Oh, yeah. I understand that.
That's what I want. And what, what I want to understand clearly is if this person understands what's happening to it right now. That's what I want to understand.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, maybe this will be helpful. Changing the zoning is not going to change the situation or fix anything. If this is a structure that's been built right on the property line, it doesn't matter what, what, what the zoning is. If he got a building permit, then we've got, our building inspectors have got a problem that they got to take care of. If he didn't get a building permit, that's a different issue. So, we just don't know what those facts are, sir.
The, what he's asking for, if you give him what he's asking for, he has to be in compliance.
Right.
Right. Either that means tear it down or whatever, but he has to be in compliance. All right. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Lancaster Council, Chairman Adams, Commissioner Keith voting in opposition, Commissioner Evans.
All right. That passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us through our zoning cases. All right. That will take us to our items of business, which is the consideration of requests to utilize up to 500,000 of ARP funding to continue emergency rental and utility assistance if the Commissioners remember. Well, I guess they want it, did we do this at the agenda or just at the AR?
This was at the ARP meeting.
Okay, then. Madam Manager?
Yes, sir. I'm going to ask Assistant County Manager Heather Skeens to present this item, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for allowing me a few minutes to talk about ERAP, or RAP, as it was originally called. Just a brief history. Cumberland received both Treasury 1 and 2 RAP or ERAP dollars back in 2021. Those dollars were expended by IEM for and on behalf of the citizens here. Cumberland then received notice from state NC Pro for additional ERAP dollars, and we received ERAP 1 state dollars. Those dollars were administered by DSS for approximately 4.8 million dollars. When DSS took over the ERAP program, there were approximately 6,000 applications that were pending from the original ERAP 1 and 2 treasury dollars that were not processed. The state ERAP 1 dollars expired on September 30th, 2022. DSS was able to process all but about 645 applicants prior to and on September 30th, and have been working diligently since September 30th to process the 645 applicants. We brought this request, this 500,000, up to 1.5 million at the time last Thursday to our ARP committee to access the, what we are calling bridge funding to finish out those old pending applications. We understand that we will be receiving additional dollars, but we have not received a confirmation of that date of distribution. Since, since October 13th, we've gone back and reevaluated those 645 cases and believe anywhere from about 50 to 70 will be eligible. The reason that we have an estimate is there are still a few cases that they're in the process of processing, waiting for additional documents, and they believe those cases will be eligible based off of pending review of those cases. So, at this time, we're requesting a usage of the ARP allocated dollars, already allocated, of approximately up to 500,000 to finish out those old cases. Our plan is, is that when we receive additional dollars, we have requested and have received confirmation of Treasury ERAP to reallocate a dollar, dollars, and state ERAP to allocated dollars. We plan to open up a portal when we receive those electronic funds transfers to be able to process new applications. So, we're still trying to finish up applications that are up to a year old at this point.
I guess my question, we were just here last Thursday, and it was 645, and now we down to 50 to 70. How did we move that quick? I mean, we hadn't moved that quick. I just don't understand that we, what did we do?
So, DSS staff have been working tirelessly since June to process 6, 6,000 applications.
I got that part, but Thursday we were here, it was 645. I'm not going back to the 6,000. I got that part. But this was 645 Thursday. That's where we had the 1.5 million, and now we're down to 50 to 7, 70. So, out of those, I mean, that's almost 500 and some people that, applications, we went through since Thursday?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to mention that the original memorandum, I believe, was prepared on October the 5th. So, we are really measuring that difference of 645 to 50 and 70 from October 5th through last Thursday.
Staff have also, also worked overtime. We've received information back. We've taken out prospective rent of those 645 to try to reduce that number. Perspective rent could be paid for out of new funds, so we can hold those funds until additional funds have come in.
Wait a minute. Say that one more time now. I missed that part.
So, we've taken out all the prospective rent from those 645 and have just processed the need to make them whole and can hold the prospective rent, which is up to three months, for new allocations. So, we're holding some of those dollars that were approved or could be approved, and that 1.5 million, holding and taking out the prospective rent and holding that until our new allocation is coming and just making that, those individuals whole. So, paying the past rent utilities.
So, the 645 is still there, possibly, and you're just doing the 50 to 70 to make those whole?
Correct.
Oh, that's not the way, okay. That's, that's-
Well, that's not what it-
Yeah, that's not the way it reads, but I understand. So, there are still these other applications, but they were prospective, because I thought when we talked about it on Thursday, this was, nothing was prospective. It was all past to be able to do that. I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I understand where we are. So, and I don't have a problem with this, but I just want to make sure that I understand that we still have over 500 applications that are still there. That is, some of it's prospective, I guess.
As of last week, we had, and we're finishing processing the 645. At the time, we were looking at past rent and prospective rent in those 645.
Right.
After the conversation on Thursday, we went back and removed all of the prospective rent-
Right.
-out of those 645. So, some of those are eligible, they're eligible for prospective rent. They're just not eligible for past rent.
And, and I, I got it now. So, but when you say there's 50 to 70 of those 645 that are eligible, it made me believe the other 500 were gone. You, you see what I'm saying? So, basically, we just hold those in abeyance, waiting for this new round of money to be able to come. I guess it's, is that how I'm looking at it?
For their prospective rent.
I got you. All right. Commissioner Keith, I'm, I'm tracking with you now.
I'm not so sure I am, because we were, we were told that the 645 had been approved. They had gone through the system, but they, they had been approved.
Well, I think that what she's saying is, yeah, they're still approved. It's just that they, some of those out of that six, 500 of it is, was prospective rent. And so, only this 50 to 70 is past rent.
But it doesn't compute, because originally they said the average that they've been paying and they've been looking at was 2,800. If you take 70 people and divide it by 500,000, it's almost $7,000. And we were talking about 2,800 for past rent and prospective rent of this 682, 645. That's how we got to 1.5 million. So, now we're only talking about, instead of 645 at 1.5 million, now we're talking about 70 at-
Up to.
Up, up, up to. Up, up, up to that.
They don't say up to, but we've been up to.
So, the numbers are all over the place when, when, when we're talking about this, and, and I, I, I'm like anybody else. I, I think that we, that there's got to be a plan in there, but we have, and I'll, I'll say again, one of the, I voted against this was because the state came up and said, hey, we want to help, we want to help. Here, here's the, uh, the ERAP funds. Oh, but if you don't get it in by this day, we're taking all that money back. And that's what they did. They took the money that was promised to Cumberland County, and they're taking it back. Now, we're trying to put this bridge loan in, but Heather, from what I'm hearing from you, I'm sorry, Ms. Skeens, what I'm hearing from you is, from the chairman, was those 645, it says, of the 645 applications that were not able to be completed by September 30th, they project that 50 or 75 of those applicants are eligible for ERAP funding with an approximate total of no more than five. Someone would believe that 645 minus 70 are not eligible, and is that not the case?
There may be a few of those 645 that are not eligible. There are, um, I think they were still processing 10 cases over the weekend, and I do not have the eligibility data for those cases.
Did any of the 645, are any of them not eligible today? Did any of those not pass eligibility?
She says 17. 17 they're working on.
Yeah, there's 10 that I don't-
Only 10 out of 645?
There's 10 that I don't know of at this point.
She doesn't know whether one way or the other.
Um, there are, um, lots of cases where there was not a past COVID, um, impact, but there is a current or prospective impact.
Okay, let's say that it's 550. Where are you going to get money for that?
So, those individuals, we want to hold-
Well, we don't know when that's coming.
So, we've received confirmation, as I indicated, from Treasury to reallocated dollars, that we will receive a 1.7 million in Treasury to reallocated dollars at some point. We do not know what date that will come.
1.9.
But we had that information the other day, but we don't know the date.
No.
Because we talked about November 1st, but then we said, no, we're not sure about that.
No, for what I've got Thursday was Treasury I, you didn't know about at all.
Correct.
Treasury II, we were waiting on. Treasury I, you've now gotten that as a reallocation.
Treasury II.
Treasury II, because we weren't sure it was going to be a reallocation.
Do we have that money?
We do not have it yet.
When will we have it?
I do not know.
My point?
Yeah. So, we have received notification from Treasury that we are eligible for and will receive 1.7 million in Treasury II ERAP dollars, but it did not give a date of when we will receive those dollars.
And Heather, again, I've told you before, and I'll say it publicly, I appreciate the position that you're in, because you inherited a mess, and you did, and, and I, I acknowledge that. But these are the same people that applied for these funds in November-
Right.
-of 2021.
Or along that line, somewhere in there, but not all in 2021.
That's when we, that's when we cut it off. So, it was either then or before.
No, we cut it off in, did we cut it off in 2021?
I don't recall.
I don't even remember.
I don't know. IEM was, um-
Yeah.
-leading the effort at that point.
Right.
Our contractor.
All right. Thank you. So, if I can get a motion to approve up the 500,000 of ARP funding allocated for the household assisted rental to, uh, fund those 50 to 70, uh, that have been approved?
Some more.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Council, Chairman Evans, Commissioner, Chairman Adams, Commissioner Evans voting in opposition, Commissioners Lancaster and Keith, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, consideration, uh, to submit the application for the Community Transport Program. Oh, this, we just, oh, that's Mr. Hay, okay, he's still here. Madam Manager?
This item was presented at the agenda session last Thursday. The, um, motion was not unanimous, and so we're bringing it forward tonight as an item of business.
All right. Did Commissioner Keith, was there-
Move to approve.
Do you, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second. All those in favor?
That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Uh, I think there's one motion, one motion, um, appointment, there's no nominations, one appointment.
Wait, hold on.
Commissioner, what? Where you at?
I thought you were moving all the ARP stuff here at this meeting. That's, that's, that was the reason for that.
But the nonprofits.
On the nonprofit.
Did we not do the, um, to move the nonprofits forward to, um, make the motion to, for that to go through, uh, small business?
So, we were going, we, I did not bring that forward on this agenda.
Uh-huh. I thought the recommendation was just to reject it at that point.
Yes, just to reject it.
But that was, I thought that, I thought that was kind of the, that was the recommendation.
That, that was my error. But-
When, when can we, uh-
We can do that at our-
Mr. Chair, if you, please, uh, we, uh, we'd like to get that moving.
We, we can still start that process, and I can check with Vicki Evans. We, staff can still be working in that effort. We're bu- building the, uh, portal for the business applications for nonprofits. We can continue working those applications and have the board formally reject those proposals at the November 7th meeting.
Okay. And, and I, I, just because I was trying to get some clarity today, I, I, sorry, I looked down at the agenda and just missed that it wasn't on there.
Yeah.
But I think it's, uh, uh, the intent to, and I guess is to reject, but to, but the ones that we already have is to work through those through the small business. If we don't use up all those funds, then open it back up, uh, because there are other folk who didn't do it under the small business who might be eligible for that. So, okay, so, you can work through that process of the ones we have, and we can go ahead and maybe get those in our first meeting, uh, early meeting in, uh, November and not wait till the middle.
Yes, sir.
And the ARP committee can meet in between time to be able to do that either before or, or the day before.
Well said, Mr. Chairman, well said.
Thank you. Uh, so, that will take us, do we have no nominations? We have one appointment. I'll go to Commissioner Evans.
Um, yes, sir, Mr. Chair, we, uh, Mr. Chair and Board, we have one, um, vacancy for the Human Relations Commission. I would like to make a motion that we, um, appoint the nominee Cameron Williams to serve an un, um, unexpired term.
Is there a second? It's been moved to second.